Quarter at 7:02. Apologize for being a couple of minutes late. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with thirty total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The Planning and Zoning Commission may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The Planning and Zoning Commission may choose to place the item on a future agenda. The presiding officer may modify these times as deemed necessary. And tonight, we have no one wanting to speak on comments of public interest.
Thank you. Let's move to consent.
The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual consideration by commissioners or staff.
Does anyone want to remove an item from the consent agenda? And I know we had discussed in preliminary there might be a speaker, but my understanding is there is no speakers on consent.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as provided.
I second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bronski with a second by Commissioner Horn to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. That item carries eight to zero. Item one.
Items for individual consideration. Public hearing items. Unless instructed otherwise by the Chair, speakers will be called upon in the order registrations are received. Applicants are limited to fifteen minutes of presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to thirty total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may modify these times as deemed necessary. Administrative consideration items must be approved if they meet city development regulations. Legislative consideration items are more discretionary, except as constrained by legal considerations. Agenda item number one, public hearing zoning case 2022-003. Request to amend and expand Plan Development 129 General Office on sixty-two, sorry, sixty-three point two acres and rescind specific use permit number 609 for helastopped on nine point one acres located at the northeast corner of Coit Road and Fifteenth Street, tabled on August 1st, 2022. Applicant is HSP of Texas Incorporated, Columbia Medical Center of Plano subsidiary LP, Healthcare Property Investors Incorporated, DHC Plano Medical Center LLC, Acres of Sunshine Limited, and Texas Psychiatric Company Incorporated. Legislative consideration.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Donna Faletta, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. It is recommended that the Commission accept the applicant's request to table to the September 6th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any technical questions for staff on this item? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
This is the last opportunity to table, right? Or do they, have they run out of their shot clock after this?
They're not under the shot clock.
Yeah, not under the shot clock. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have Royce Clayton.
Good evening. Having done a little research, I have a couple of questions.
Sir, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Royce R. Clayton. My address is 3729 Cromwell Court. I'm immediately behind the hospital property. Having done just a little bit of research, medical city Plano should have FAA approval according to a new document. It's AC 150-5390-2C. It requires approval for takeoff and landings. It requires approval for the actual landing site itself. They also have to verify with the city, does the local fire department, the engine responding company have foam capabilities instantly upon arrival? Reason being is there's nitrogen and oxygen stored on the east side of that building which would be in the crisis zone. The other thing is, carrying that forward, right now, we have an issue with the hospital because we have a retaining wall or a brick wall that's about six feet high that's falling over. It's leaning against power poles. It's causing electrical problems for our homes when the wind blows because the poles are leaning. We also have trucks driving through this vacant field that they're using for storage area that they haven't cleaned up since the last construction project. So basically, what I think I'm trying to say is we have neighbors that are not being good neighbors right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have another speaker, it looks like.
Yes, we do. Heron Patel.
All right, Heron Patel, 3725 Cromwell Court, right, right next to Skip, right behind the hospital. So I submitted a document to the Planning Committee earlier today, just kind of give you a summary of thoughts on this decision. It kind of summarizes our understanding of the corporation and what the decision is in rezoning here, along with our issues as residents. Three key issues: privacy, property issues, safety, noise issues, and then the issues with the corporation itself, along with our three proposed solutions and a summary of that. So I just wanted to submit that into public record, and then we can discuss it next time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We do not have any additional speakers. We do have two that registered in opposition to the project.
They're in opposition to the project, not to table. Okay, unclear. All right, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Final discussion to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the applicant's request to table zoning case 2022-003 to the September 6th, 2022 P&amp;Z meeting.
I had a question, and I don't know if this is something Eric could answer. The wall that he mentioned that's leaning up against poles, is that a city wall or is that a?
So let's make our decision around tabling, and then we can address.
Okay, so my only question is on tabling. We've tabled this already once. We've not heard from the applicant about the length of time they're going to need to continue whatever they're doing. Do we have any idea that this next one may be enough for them?
Yeah, we've been working with the applicant. I believe they'll be ready for the next agenda.
Okay, then I'll second Commissioner Horn's motion.
Thank you. So a motion by Commissioner Horn, second by Commissioner Bronski to table item one until the September 6th, 2022 meeting. Please vote. And that item carries eight to zero.
I will be reading item 2A and 2B together.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 2A is a public hearing zoning case 2022-011. Request to rezone 7.8 acres located at the northeast corner of Jupiter Road and Los Rios Boulevard from Plan Development 12, single-family residence seven, to Plan Development 12, multifamily residence one. Applicant is Al DeWan Properties LLC. This is a legislative consideration. Agenda item number 2B, public hearing, is a consent plan. Juniper Family Development, Block A, Lot 1. Eighty multifamily dwelling units on one lot on 6.8 acres located at the northeast corner of Jupiter Road and Los Rios Boulevard. Zone Plan Development 12, single-family residence seven. This is an administrative consideration.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kacha Copeland, and I'm the Senior Planner with the Planning Department. This request is to rezone the northeast corner of Jupiter Road and Los Rios Boulevard from Plan Development 12, single-family seven, residence seven, to Plan Development 12, multifamily residence one.
Do you have spoken caption? Spoken caption, do you have? We can't hear anything that is going on.
Can we try boosting her mic, please? Can you hear me?
A little bit.
Let's just try boosting the mics a little bit, please. That's what I'm talking about. I understand.
Okay. The property to the north, south, east, and west are zoned agricultural and include vacant land, single-family residential homes, and part of the Oak Point Park and Nature Preserve Park. Shown on the screen is the Companion Concept Plan showing the proposed eighty-unit multifamily development. It shows ten two-story multifamily buildings, one one-story community building, one swimming pool, one hundred and sixty-five surface-level parking spaces. Shown on the screen is the Usable Open Space Plan. The Usable Open Space Plan totals one hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet, which equals approximately forty-two percent of the lot. The subject property is designated as neighborhoods on the future land use map. And this property is classified as undeveloped housing in the land use and housing inventory map. This request does not conform to the Mix of Uses section in the N Dashboard and would result in an increase in multifamily housing types. The recommended twenty percent for multifamily housing types has already been achieved. The additional eighty units will increase that percentage from twenty-four point six-seven to twenty-four point seven-three percent. Staff analyzed the proposal with the Companion Concept Plan for conformance with the desirable character-defining elements in the N Dashboard. The proposal meets all but transit. This request is disfavored due to the lack of conformity with the housing mix of the N Dashboard within the comprehensive plan. Approval should be carefully deliberated and justified by findings. Up on the screen is the traditional neighborhood form that can be found when reviewing the neighborhood's dashboard in the comprehensive plan. You can see this pattern repeated across the city. The neighborhood unit is bound by major roadways and is typically centered around a park or school. Single-family detached homes are the primary housing type with multifamily or and/or single-family attached housing serving as transitions to commercial or institutional uses at the major intersections. The proposed rezoning would be out of character for this pattern, as the site would not be serving as a buffer for commercial uses and is not located at the intersection of two major roadways, noting that Los Rios Boulevard is classified as a Type D secondary thoroughfare on the thoroughfare map. The neighborhood's dashboard does not support additional density for this area. However, south of this site, along Spring Creek Parkway, increased density including additional multifamily units are supported by the envisioned Oak Point Plan. The applicant is proposing some standards to restrict the density and height of their request. The maximum density in MF1 is twelve units per acre with a height maximum of three stories and forty feet. The applicant is proposing eleven point seven-three units per acre and limiting the height to two stories, thirty feet, per the Plan Development stipulations. The applicant's proposal provides low multimodal transit access. First, GoLink is a service offered by DART and provides a hired company driver to assist in day-to-day needs to their customers. Residents must pay to use this service. And GoLink does not directly serve the property, but is within a one-mile radius. Additionally, Parker Road Light Rail Station and a bus stop located at Parker Road and Seventy-Five are both within three point five miles of this site, but again does not directly serve it. Overall, future residents would likely need to have another mode of transportation to benefit from these services. Up on the screen are the PD restrictions. Staff received three letters within the two-hundred-foot radius. Due to the acreage size of the opposition, supermajority is triggered. Staff received a total of eight hundred and nineteen responses by noon on Friday, August 12th. The map on the screen reflects those numbers. When this presentation was submitted to Plano TV, there were a total of eight hundred and thirty-one responses, six in favor, five neutral, and eight hundred and twenty in opposition. And as of 3:00 PM today, we received two additional responses, both in opposition, bringing the total response count to eight hundred and thirty-three. To conclude, the applicant is requesting to rezone Plan Development 12, single-family residence seven, to Plan Development 12, multifamily resident one, to allow for multifamily residential development. Additional housing is needed in the community, and the proposed height limitations respect the standards of the surrounding area. However, this request is not aligned with the Mix of Uses, traditional neighborhood form, or character-defining elements of the neighborhood's land designation in the comprehensive plan, and for those reasons, staff recommends denial of the request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I see one light on already. Commissioner Stone.
Yes, thank you for that good presentation. Would you back up to the slide on transit access? Here we go.
Oh, sorry.
Do I understand from item number two there, it's an eight-minute drive from this site to the Parker Road Station, basically a three-and-a-half-mile walk. Is that correct?
Correct. In the image, the second image closer to the bottom of the screen, there is a star where the site is being proposed, and you can see a red marker in the bottom-left corner where the Parker Road Station is.
Yes.
And the bus stop is very close, approximately where that Tuesday morning ad is being shown.
Okay, okay. Can you tell me from your personal knowledge, where is the closest shopping to this corner, to Jupiter and Los Rios? Do you, do you know? Can you share that with us?
Define shopping. Just a mall or a strip center?
No, local shopping, 7-Eleven.
On Spring Creek Parkway.
On Spring Creek Parkway. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Go ahead. Oh, Commissioner Ollie.
Quick question. Affordable housing, what's the definition of that? Is it the cost to build, the market rate of the housing? What qualifies a development as affordable housing? Because the transit requirements are tied to that, so I'm just trying to understand how this qualifies as affordable housing.
Sure. So the applicant can speak to their development plan as far as how many units are being designated as affordable.
Okay.
The applicant provided a statement that is provided in your packet, talking about lower rents for people who are meeting the threshold of less than thirty percent of their income going towards rent and utilities.
Okay. Follow-up question to that, if I may. The transit requirement, is that tied to the special housing needs, AKA the affordable housing portion of this application, or is that tied to the neighborhood dashboard, the desirable character elements? What, what triggers the transit requirement?
The special housing needs.
The special housing needs.
Commissioner Bronski.
So I've got a couple of questions. Number one, in your presentation, you provided a document from Plano ISD.
Yes.
That talked about the enrollments of the schools. Correct. Can you tell me an approximate number that we would see out of these eighty units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, I think three-bedroom units as well, what kind of a, an increase the school might expect to see? Is there a planning number for that at all?
Sure. So what's being proposed is a garden-style apartment, and in our 2022 annual report, we break down the students per acre slash unit based on the housing type, and based on the garden-style apartment that this applicant is proposing, we can expect around fifty additional students in this area, and with the Plano ISD letter, they can support that number of additional students.
Not only that, they could probably support double that without breaking their functional capacity, let alone their program capacity, correct?
They provided a graph in their letter that states that they can support at least fifty additional students.
Okay. Second question was, when you go to your document that you had submitted to us about traffic, the traffic analysis portion, it, it broke down, I guess, what is currently traffic in that area, AM to PM, seventeen in the AM, twenty-two in the PM, and then it, with this proposed development being added, a sixty-five percent increase in the AM and a fifty-nine percent increase in the PM?
Yes.
Is that going to trigger any kind of additional construction or difficulty? I mean, from looking at the maps on Los Rios, and I watched the traffic go by there for several hours today, are we going to have to do, do some more additional, something to support this on Los Rios being a two-lane road?
So in 2016, there was a study done on Los Rios and Jupiter to analyze the applicability of an additional light, and back in 2016, those numbers did not equate to needing a stoplight. And transportation has confirmed that they're going to be doing a, an additional study at that intersection. However, a CIP project has been developed in order to provide a designated right turn lane on Los Rios Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carey.
First of all, I say, Kacha, a great presentation, and I am impressed with your comprehensive knowledge of what is going on around here, so, well done. My question, I hope, is somewhat simple. Has engineering looked at the fact that there's a, it looks like a creek on this property, and what if any effect building this might have on drainage, flood control, things like that?
Sure. So a flood study was done back in 2016 when the previous zoning was approved for the Plan Development 12, single-family residence seven, and the flood study was reviewed and approved based on that layout of the twenty-two single-family homes. And if the, if the wall and the design, and the design including the walls, culvert, and bridges that were provided in that flood study, they would not need to provide another flood study. However, if that changes, the applicant would need to submit a flood study during the preliminary plat and site plan portion.
Yes, so I don't remember if this was in, in your documents, but I would guess that significantly more of the land is going to be covered either with buildings and/or pavement with this, and so we don't think that would have any effect on the need for drainage or flood control going from the twelve houses to these with significantly, I'm guessing, significantly more land coverage.
So all of the stormwater runoff will all end up in Rowlett Creek, and so it's up to the applicant on how they're going to direct that stormwater runoff to get to Rowlett Creek.
Do you, do you know, at this point, how high above the creek these buildings are and how much at risk they might be from a, an unusual rain event, which we're seeing all over the country right now?
I do not know that, but I can definitely find out for you.
I knew if I ask enough questions, I would stump you, so now I'm done. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Commissioner Ratliff.
Thank you. Number one, great job on the report. I read it twice to try to soak it all in, so I'm glad that you know it better than I do at this point. I had a question about, just philosophically, as part of our, our comprehensive plan, our higher-density developments tend to be closer to shopping, transit, restaurants, et cetera. Is that correct? Is that the desirable location as a general rule?
That's, that's correct. So it's several areas, but the mixed-use activity centers, the downtown corridor with the DART stations, and US-75 redevelopment.
Okay. So I mean, that's tends to be where we have located them in the past, but just looking at this particular one, I mean, I don't see any of those things around this site. And when we look at other developments... And when we look at other developments, I mean, am I missing something? Is there a future development that I'm not aware of? Or is there anything coming in around this site, other than what's already on Spring Creek Parkway, that would be close? The nearest restaurant's over a mile away. Am I missing anything that I'm not aware of?
So this area is just north of the envisioned Oak Point Plan, and so that's intended to be the activity center for Northeast Plano, and that's going to include shopping and dining and residential uses. And that's just a plan at this point. There's been no zoning cases submitted for that just yet.
But that's over a mile away from this site. Is that correct?
Don't believe it's, you know, longer than a mile.
Yes. It is a mile. That was just, I want to make sure I had my geography correct, so, okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
Anyone else?
One more, if I may. So for a development of this kind, we require two Type-C thoroughfares to essentially be feeding into this development. This might be Planning 101, but can you explain why? Right? So Jupiter is a Type-C, if I'm not mistaken, but Los Rios is not. Los Rios is a D. So why do we need two? Why can Jupiter suffice from a traffic outflow and inflow?
It is not the size that matches up with the Type-C thoroughfare. So the volume, the traffic volume, the width, the amount of lanes do not match, and therefore potentially are not appropriate for single-family residents to be up against. And there needs to be that buffer to protect the single-family residents, the parks, the schools. So it's more appropriate for a commercial shopping center to be up against two six-lane thoroughfares, rather than a Type-C, which is more of a four-lane, two-lane to four-lane.
So it's also a safety issue, it sounds like.
Definitely.
Commissioner Ratliff.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Ollie. Jarred my merry about a question I had as well, about transportation. Has the engineering department looked at the location of these driveways in relationship to this intersection? Because this site is served by three driveways, but number one, from being out there, the one on Jupiter is blocked by a left turn lane right now, so you can only go right out of that driveway. My guess is, at some point, the same will be true of one of those driveways on Los Rios. Have we looked at actually turning movements into this site? It looks like it would only have one full functioning driveway.
The transportation department reviewed the concept plan and approved it to their standards.
Okay. So they did look at the adequacy of access with turn lanes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we done? No. Commissioner Bronski is, I can just say.
So I've got one more. I do.
He's just hovering over the button.
I was trying to decide. Whenever I was looking at the Concept Plan Version 5 map, and I'm looking at the two driveways on Los Rios, only one of them is an entrance road, and it looks like it would be a hundred and seven point six feet from the gate entrance to the property line. Is that correct?
Could you say that one more time, now that I'm looking at the concept plan?
The entrance that's further away from Jupiter, the only entrance that's on Los Rios. Right? So the other one's an exit. The closest, oh, I lost my map. The closest to Jupiter is an exit-only, and is not an entrance. So the only entrance going into this, on this, on Los Rios, this D thoroughfare, is a hundred and seven feet from the gate entrance to the property line, correct? That's the number there I see, a hundred and seven point six.
Let's stipulate that. What's the question?
Okay. So that's approximately eight or nine car lengths, maybe at most, maybe six or seven. Once we've exceeded that, we're going to have traffic on the road as well, if we have somebody having something going on there. Is there anything that, what would happen if that were the case?
We do, the site plan, or the concept plan does have a turnaround. So if there are issues, the car potentially could pull into that turnaround space and figure out what's going on to continue to allow others who have access into the property.
My biggest concern is, I'm just, I'm not sure that that one entrance, being a D thoroughfare, and really being basically the primary entrance to this property for somebody that would be coming south, if that would be sufficient for somebody to try to get in there with that, with people going in from both directions, making the left-hand turn if I was coming south on Jupiter? I'd have to make that turn onto Los Rios, and then I'd have to wait my turn to get into that one entrance there, correct?
Right. And if you are a guest, they do have the guest, they have a call box on Los Rios. So if you are a resident, I'm sure you would hope to have immediate access if you were going southbound on Jupiter, and there wouldn't be a stack happening on Jupiter. And if you're a guest, hopefully the residents would direct their guests to entering onto the Los Rios entrance to...
That would be the only entrance for the guest, if I understand correctly.
The resident that lives at the community, to allow them access off of, into the property off of Los Rios.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we have to lean on our engineering department, who evaluated it and felt like it was within our code.
Last question. From, if this was approved, what does this do from a housing diversification perspective for the city? Does it significantly improve our mix of housing inventory, or what does it do? Does it change it in any way?
Yes. Per the comprehensive plan, it changes the multifamily types. It increases it.
It's point zero six percent, just for this one category, but citywide, it's much less than that.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Okay. Can we let her off the hot seat, or you guys still have more questions? You've done great.
Thanks.
Very good. All right. Are we done? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Before I open the public hearing, so the applicant's here, and they'll speak, they have fifteen minutes. How many speakers do we have registered?
We have a total of nine speakers on Agenda Item 2A, plus we have late entries, twelve.
So we have a total of twelve speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. We only have ten speakers. These are opinions that are registered, sorry. So we have ten speakers.
On 2A?
Correct.
And what about 2B? Is there a whole separate set?
On 2B, on 2A, I'm sorry, 2A, and on 2B, we have one that has, would like to speak in opposition.
Is it the same person speaking on 2A?
No, they are not. They didn't register on one.
Okay. So we typically allow three minutes per speaker to speak on a topic. If you're speaking on 2B, just be aware, if 2A doesn't pass, then 2B wouldn't pass. I'll allow the three minutes, but I'll encourage you to be quick. If somebody else has made the same comments you've made, feel free to say, I agree with what they said. And we can either sit here a long time, or we can hear your opinions, which are very, very important to us. Ultimately, we want to get to a point where we can take all the information we've been given from staff, the applicant, your feedback, which was fantastic. I mean, the number of responses was amazing. And what I really liked is, they weren't all carbon copies. Most of you took a lot of time to write down your individual thoughts, and that's very, very impactful versus a carbon copy deal. So we'll go with the three minutes. I've got, oh, we have two on Zoom.
We do. We have two on Zoom.
On top of the ten?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm going to encourage you even more. If somebody said something, just say, I don't need to speak, okay? I just want us all to get out of here on a good time. Trust me, we're going to hear what you say. Okay. So we're going to let the applicant go, and so I will...
We have three, we have three representatives.
Open the public hearing, and will the applicant please address the commission?
Manisha Verma, Angela Hunt, and Daniel Hendren.
Typically, the way this will go is, the applicant will address us. We will probably listen to your feedback and your comments. The applicant will have five minutes for wrap-up, at which time, we will ask our questions. And then we'll close the hearing and define discussion to us. And during that time period, if you'll just be, let us speak. We're going to listen to you when we close the public hearing, just let us speak, okay? I promise we've heard you. All right, sir. Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi. I am Manish Verma with Versa Development. How do I change the slide?
There you go.
Perfect. Manish with Versa Development, the owner and president. And with me today, I have Daniel Hendren, who's a development associate with Versa, and Angela Hunt, who's our land use attorney. I want to thank you all for meeting with us today. I know this, I appreciate all the comments y'all have had thus far, and it's good to see everybody engaged in this discussion. I want to thank the City of Plano Plan Department. I know we've had a lot of conversation over the past few months, and I know it's been a challenging process, and appreciate your time and effort and everything y'all did to at least get us to this point. And I know we're going to have folks come out and speak tonight, and obviously, there's opposition for this development, and I certainly understand that, and I appreciate that. It's great that people come out and speak about what they believe is right for their community, and we're here to hopefully address their concerns. We can't address everybody's concern, or all their concerns, but we're here to do the best we can to address everyone's concerns tonight, and of course, answer any questions you may have. How do I? All right. So we are, we are based in San Antonio. We have developed over five thousand apartment homes throughout the state of Texas. We continue to own and operate most of those today. We are, we are long-term holders. We are not merchant-built. We don't build and sell. We build and hold. And our objective is to build great housing for our residents, build great housing for the community, so the community continues to thrive and excel moving forward. That is our goal. That is our mission, and that is why we have been successful to this day. So as you know, we're talking about the site on Jupiter and Los Rios. It is currently zoned, as noted, PD, single-family zoning, and we are making a request for multifamily zoning. As you can see, the site is undeveloped, has been undeveloped since the zoning change occurred. And I think that in itself speaks volumes at a time when there is a housing shortage, a housing crisis, that a property that is zoned, that builders are looking for every day to find single-family lots to go build on, they have not been able to build on this lot for a variety of reasons. And that's what we're here to do. I know we've approached, I know we're looking at multifamily zoning. That's because that's the only designation we can qualify for. This is low-density multifamily. This is as low as density as you can go for multifamily, because we understand what a great area this is. We understand we have single family to the north, we have preservation of land to the south and to the west, which will never be developed. This is the last, really, property along this corridor that can allow for some housing, some great housing. There, it's a great school district, of course, great amenities nearby, but a great place for families to live and grow, and grow, and work. These people are already living here in Plano, but we have an affordability crisis. We have a housing crisis, and we're here today to hopefully have the opportunity to develop something that meets all of these needs in the lowest way possible, lowest impact way possible. This is not your typical garden-style development. This is not the multifamily, you see down 121, you know, four hundred units, over twenty-five acres, eighteen units, twenty-four units an acre or higher. That's not what this is. This is eleven units per acre, extremely low density. You know, there's a product, there's a development on your consent agenda tonight in downtown Plano. That's sixty units an acre. This is nothing comparable to that. I know that's a different area of town. I fully appreciate that, but my point here is that we're trying to bring a development that fits within the context of the community, of the surrounding area, and not to create higher impact than needed, and still provide great and great affordable housing. So as noted, it's not garden-style. There are no breezeways. These are all first-floor entry units. Each building is probably anywhere between four to eight units per building, and there are no breezeways. So these are homes. These are townhomes. But this is the zoning that we have to apply for to, you know, get this development off the ground. But it is, again, as lowest impact of multifamily that you can consider. Now, we've seen, you know, again, we appreciate all the voices of concern by the community, and that's why we're looking to do low impact. That's why we've offered to do no more than, whatever, eleven point seven units per acre, no more than eighty units. Height limitation, which is more restrictive than what MF allows for, to be compatible with the single-family zoning, because that is our objective. Some of the comments that we've seen as far as opposition, this is Section 8, this is not Section 8 housing. This is workforce housing. These are people that are working here today already, working, but they're not living here because they can't afford to live here. Folks that you see at the grocery store to check out your groceries, that you would talk to every day, but they can't afford to live here. Thirty-five percent of the people living within a mile of this site would qualify to live at this development. So these are working-class individuals, families, teachers, firemen, policemen, and that's the community that we're looking to serve. So, you know, to add more color on what we're proposing, you know, market conditions in Plano have caused an increase in home values and rental rates over the last several years. This is not just a US crisis or a Texas crisis. It's happening right here. And as summarized in the City of Plano's Housing Trend Analysis, Plano has experienced significant employment growth in the past fifteen years. However, residential growth has not occurred at the same pace. And while the city has been extremely successful in attracting major employers, residentially-zoned land in this city is almost entirely built out. That's why we're here, because there's limits of how much residential land is available. And this is making new residential development increasingly challenging. Employment growth without concurrent residential growth alongside with this land constraint, a lack of residential zone property, has put increasing pressure on the housing market, resulting in a lack of starter homes and homes affordable to the generation, to the general workforce. Additionally, according to the Consolidated Plan of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, eleven percent of all households are severely cost-burdened, spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing. And I think that was one of your questions, what is affordable housing? You know, honestly, in my view, and most, in most people's view, fifty percent is too much. Anything over thirty-five percent is overburdened. It's overburdened. And so that eleven percent is actually much greater than that. Additionally, this data is all based on 2015 data. These numbers have all been calculated prior to the recent inflationary trends impacting consumer goods, and without consideration of changes in housing prices over this extensive timeframe from, over the last seven years. Additionally, the plan states that a goal of increasing affordable housing units is a high priority, including development of new ownership and rental units. And that's what we're trying to do here today. That's what we're asking for. That is our request. There was a recent report that came out by Texas A&amp;M that just got published in reference to the second quarter 2022 data. Median sales prices have gone up sixteen percent year-over-year in Texas. That's just this year. Forget what it was last year. And that's not, and that's not, that's not going away. Collin County, in addition, is the second-least affordable county in Texas, behind only Travis County. So that's why we're here today, to talk about low-impact development, to bring great workforce housing to the community. I thank you for your time. So I want to pass it on to Daniel to talk further about our proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you, Manish. Thank you, everyone. As we move forward, what I like to do is hit some of the notes that Manish had mentioned, but then also touch on what we really feel are strong arguments for other aspects of adopted ordinance policies and plans that the City of Plano has. When it, to answer your question, sir, in terms of the number of affordable units, this would bring sixty-four affordable units to the community. Sixteen would be fully market rate. When you look at Plano's rents today, that would mean that a one-bedroom at this particular development would be fifteen hundred dollars per month. A two-bedroom would rent for nineteen fifty, and a three-bedroom would be twenty-five hundred. That's larger than a lot of mortgage payments. And there would have to be a compelling reason for an individual to rent an apartment in this location, and those compelling reasons are why everybody in this, in this, in this community... are why everybody in this, in this, in this community and in the surrounding homeowners' associations want to live there. It's because people want to live in this particular location, and we want to share that with others in the community. As we move forward, this is a colored site plan, which is a little bit, evidences the open space a little bit further. The open space is estimated to be about 65% of the overall site. You can see the one-story clubhouse and then the humidity center and pool. I'm happy to answer questions, but I, I do want to be brief to, to limit our time here. So when we look at the 2020 and 2024 Consolidated Plan that's adopted by the City of Plano to address HUD housing needs, there are a few different items that we feel really tie back to that. So we do feel that it does fit within the neighborhood just based on the scale and the fact that sing, that garden-style multifamily is an acceptable use in neighborhoods, albeit currently, the comprehensive plan states that there's too much multifamily in the neighborhood zoning, because that was capped at 20%. We're already in excess of that by 4.5%. If you look to the special housing needs policy, creating affordable homeownership opportunities as well as increasing just the number of overall affordable households is a, is a key imperative as well. As we move forward, this is language taken directly from the resolution of support that we received in January of this year. City of Plano Housing Infill Program encourages the development of real property for low-income housing. It's in the public interest of the citizens of the City of Plano that the application be made to the TDHCA for these funds, which is exactly what we have done. If we look at this year's HUD Annual Action Plan, which actually ranges from 2020 to 2024, the goals are to provide decent affordable housing, and you can see the breakdown there, affordable housing units for two households. We're looking at, at increasing that significantly. Creating suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities, and that's really what we're, that, that really is what Manish is talking about with workforce housing. There's upward economic mobility in this area with the proximity to Collin County Community College. The, the public schools are great. The rent burden part of the equation, the less somebody is spending on rent, the more than they can save and enjoy that upward economic mobility. That is our goal. And as we look at the strategic vision, in 2019, Plano City Council incorporated housing affordability as an important component of its strategic vision to improve the quality of life for all residents.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. So as we look to the, this is in a report that was just accepted and passed by the City Council on their consent, consent agenda on July the 25th, just last month, and here are the impediments to fair housing choice, and I don't need to read all of these, but we meet essentially half a dozen of the items listed here. To increase affordable housing in high-opportunity areas, which are generally identified as areas of, areas with less than 10% poverty, this particular tract is 3.3%, but yet, we find that still, within one mile, 35% of the residents who already live here would qualify for reduced rents. That's, I, I can't overstate the importance of affordable housing and what that means in this community. It, it looks a lot different, and it feels a lot different than affordable housing in other areas that are maybe a little more affordable. So as we look to increase the supply of affordable housing units, accessible housing, which ties back to the special housing needs, because we would more than exceed both mobility as well as audiovisual needs for those with disabilities, and I'll just, I'll move on because we are short on time. As we look at the other obstacles to meeting the areas of impediment, we talk about limited funding, and here we have a development which is teed up and ready to go. You say the word, and, and we're, we're ready, okay? The TDHCA has, has provided their support, and we're looking at magnifying and multiplying the amount of dollars. I know that the HUD Action Plan has a budget of about 4.1 million. We're talking about tripling or quadrupling that investment in this community this year. The local market, Manish had already tucked, touched on this in terms of, and these are quotes from the adopted plans, where through the housing tax credit application process, the city seeks to assist developers that propose housing tax credit projects in Plano by providing resolutions of support to obtain funds through the TDHCA, which is exactly what we have done successfully. And here, just goes back to touch on the mix of uses, and I know I'm running short on time, where we look at the single-family, we look at single-family attached as well as multifamily. Multifamily is, is adopted to be capped at 20%, which we're already in excess of, and I just want to thank you for your time, and we appreciate your consideration on this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will be calling you back for questions a little later.
Yes.
Okay. So can we start with the two Zoom individuals first?
Yes, first online is Curtis Slow.
Mr. Slow, can you hear us? They're working on it here. Okay, there's Mr. Slow. We can see you, you're muted, it looks to me like.
All right. Can you hear everybody? Can y'all hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all. It just switched me over to a panelist, so there was a little bit of a lag. So I had written a letter, it's actually in the packet.
Excuse me, Mr. Slow, would you give us your name and address first, and then continue?
Yes. Yep, yep, sure. My name is Curtis Slow. Don't worry about mispronouncing my name, nobody gets it correct, so no harm, no foul. I live at 3400 Bluegrass Drive. My backyard literally looks past Oak Point Nature Preserve, so I'm very close to where this development is looking for. So I had actually written a letter on behalf of our HOA. I actually serve as the president of the HOA Board of Timberbrook Estates. We are just over 800 single-family homes, and so by my count, we're the, we're actually the largest HOA in Plano. And this, this area, I mean, I've lived here since late 2013, and I've been a homeowner since then. My wife and I have built our, our life here. In short, right, my letter speaks to many of our concerns, but I really wanted to talk about a couple of the concerns mentioned by the committee members in terms of traffic. If anybody has gone to just sit at this intersection where Los Rios meets Jupiter during rush hour time, you will notice the line of cars runs from Jupiter all the way back to the entrance to the Oak Point Nature Preserve Rec Center. It's massive. I, I know, I'm not sure if I know your name, but one of the committee members was mentioning turning into and out of, right? You take a, a right onto Los Rios from Jupiter, and then you have to wait to get in. That will also impede a bunch of traffic on Jupiter. So that's a grave concern, not to mention the fact that we have a lot of times, Los Rios right there is closed down for 5Ks for different walks, we have the Plano Balloon Festival to happen, so this, this is a really high-traffic area as it is. So we're talking about including, or in, increasing that by 80 units, which, you know, just double it up, and some units are going to have three cars, right? So we're, we're talking about a big influx of traffic that will definitely have a big negative impact on this area, just on that alone. Secondly, I mean, if y'all look in drive-through here, this is a nature area, that, that's why I chose this area.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Perfect. My last bit is of, as, as Mr. Manish had said, a lot of people that say affordable housing is a different description. Many of my homeowners have actually told me that if this does get approved, they will be putting their homes up for sale and leaving Plano, because whether it's, you know, a justified fear or whatever, there's no support of this within our HOA, within me as a homeowner.
Sir.
I understand the need for affordable housing.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for hearing me. I'm sorry I went over, but y'all can read my letter in the, in the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slow. Next speaker, please.
Next is Rebecca Atmacor.
Is she, oh, there she is.
I've definitely figured it out.
All right, thank you. Can you please say your name and address?
My name is Rebecca Atmacor. My address is 6904 Emerald Coast Drive in Plano. I'm also on the HOA, I'm the HOA president for Timberbrook East, directly across the street on the other side of Jupiter. My concerns, I appreciate that we do need affordable housing in Plano, and the developers met with us earlier, and this development looks very nice, it just needs to be somewhere else. Partly because of the traffic issue, I used to commute down Los Rios, and at rush hour in the evening, I would sit in that line for about 15 to 20 minutes just waiting to turn right. So there's definitely going to be backup. They will also use Jupiter Road, go up, and then have to make a U-turn at Timberbrook, so I feel like there's going to be further accidents there. And also, at Jupiter and, I'm sorry, at Los Rios and Parker, there's always accidents at that intersection, because there's a hill there and you can't see. My other big concern is just the green space and the, the nature preserve area. That area hosts a lot of 5Ks and the balloon festival, and everybody likes to come there because it's a nice, open space. The properties there with the single-family houses, they just kind of continue visually the wildlife and the visual green space, and makes it a much nicer area. It'll also affect the wildlife in that area.
It's 8 o'clock.
Not sure what that was. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, my computer tells me the time.
Oh, okay. It's 8 o'clock, everybody. All right, go ahead.
But it would just, I think the, the land there, it just, it's much more visually open, and it just kind of extends Oak Point Nature Park. And I think the excess of traffic and just blocking off, there won't be as much green space in that area. It's just not the right place for that development.
Thank you. Okay. We managed Zoom with only one computer alert saying.
There we go.
All right, so let's move on to our speakers in-house.
Yes, next is Patricia Cole.
For all of you that are speaking, just right off the bat, name, address.
Patricia Cole, my address is 3636 Bright Starway in Plano 75074. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My family has been here since the 1920s. When I was a kid, I was raised in Dallas, and I came to see my great-grandparents here, and also my uncle Charlie. Charlie and Maggie Dooley were a part of the city and its planning, and the Dooley Elementary School is named for him. And we have resided in his home since 1983 until we moved in 2012 to a smaller home north of Oak Point Preserve. So my family has a big interest in this particular area. First of all and foremost, it is now, it is against the comprehensive plan. People spent 18 months in order to form that out. It may be a small, small portion, but they, they worked extremely hard on that. It's also on the edge of a floodplain, and if we know what happens with some of these torrential rains, it's going to cause a major disaster. Also, I agree with the situation on the, of the intersection of Los Rios and Jupiter, trying to get on to going south on Jupiter. It is extremely dangerous. You have three lanes coming at you from one direction and three lanes from another, and there is no left turn out of this particular facility. If you, oh, and to let you know, it is 3.1 miles to the nearest good grocery store. Now, can you imagine somebody traveling six miles with an infant in hand with no transportation because the family employer took the car that day? That's going to happen. 20 years ago, the Samaritan Inn asked to come into the City of Plano and put a housing unit like they have to rehabilitate people once they have lost their jobs. They were going to put it over by the Salvation Army, which is off of 14th Street. The city said no, but now the city is saying, oh, come on, let's just take every piece of land and stack as many people on top of it as we can. We are overpopulated with high density. About seven units are in that area already. The congestion is extremely bad and going to be worse with the new park that's being built right on Spring Creek and Jupiter. That's already multi-density, and we've got two apartment complexes right on Spring Creek. Then we have the, the housing that is with the community college right down Jupiter. It's past time to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark.
Please call the next three speakers, and if you would, come on down when she calls your name and grab a seat down front so that it's quicker to the podium. So the first speaker was?
Mark Newcomb, and then if Linda Vazella and Shamira Lawrence can have a seat and wait your time.
All right, where's Linda? There's one of them. Who's the other one? Yes, please come on down front, just so it's quicker this way. Mark?
Okay, my name is Mark Newcomb. I live at 7025 Twin Ponds, which is in Timberbrook Estates, and I think I did have one graphic that could be put up, which, no, well, close, okay. Basically, you've shot my three minutes down to almost nothing with everyone else saying the same thing, so I'll just summarize. Just a couple pieces of data. One, one thing that was mentioned earlier about the Plano ISD and the additional students. Plano ISD is huge, and I just want to know if the study has been done specifically to the schools right around the, the, this area of, of Los Rios and Jupiter, because, again, spreading 80, 160 students to the, the whole ISD may sound good, but if you get localized to this area, how will that affect? The other point was, people have mentioned the floodplain. The specific data that was in the site data table said that currently there's over 53% of the property is in a floodplain, and the proposed will reduce it to just 12%. So my questions are, you know, how's that going to be reduced? And again, people have mentioned flooding. They are right across from the, the nature preserve. Currently, the nature preserve does flood severely when there is a lot of rain, so I'm just concerned about that additional floodwater going into the, into the preserve. You know, you can make blanket statements about, oh, it's going to reduce property value, but without having hard data, you know, you don't want to make those kind of blanket statements, but we, we are concerned about what are the standards that the, this complex will, will give you compared to the HOAs around, which do have standards in order to keep up our maintenance, our appearance, and tax and property values. So the other one, I had, there was a screenshot from this morning, I can basically kind of hold it up, give you same idea. The red, this is based on the, the survey that was done by asking the people how they would vote, and the numbers were given at just under 800, 800 people have responded, and clearly, there were six or eight people that have voted for it, the, the majority have voted against it, and this is all the, the people just surrounding the, the blue area, which is the area of interest. Everyone else in the general neighborhood have said no, which, to me, it should be a clear signal to the committee that this is not a good idea at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. Next speaker.
Get moving, huh? Okay, I'm here.
There's no need to jog.
Thank you for having us here. I'm Linda Vazella, 2701 Timberbrook Drive. Thank you for this open session. And can you hear me in the back, because I missed out on a lot when you could, oh, good, okay. I don't want them to miss out on me either, seriously. Initially, I was hesitant, I was reluctant to oppose this rezoning project for affordable housing. I thought, who am I to obstruct others' access to where to live? Well, I thought about this for quite a while. I slept on it, I thought about it, and then I realized, I realized, this is not about depriving anyone to fear affordable housing, because that's not the real issue here. The real issue is the inappropriate use of that land on the corner of Jupiter and Los Rios, right smack in the middle of, of Oak Point Park Nature Preserve. It's smack in the middle. I know it's not part of the park, but it's smack in the middle, in my view, obviously, at that beautiful, beautiful park that took over 20 years to fully develop, 20 years for me and my neighbors to enjoy and reap the benefit of its free-flowing beauty. So yes, it's inappropriate to allow cement housing on that corner, whether it's affordable, unaffordable, or a hotel. It would be like me parking an 18-wheeler in my driveway every day, or having a pet cat. It would be like me parking an eighteen-wheeler in my driveway every day or having a pet cow in the front of my yard. Inappropriate. I also find it inappropriate, and without insult to the committee, to the commission, I find it concerning that you would even consider such a project. And you would actually, if you would actually approve an apartment complex on that charming seven acres of land, surely there are other locations appropriate for this lovely housing project that they're trying to present. Thank you. How did I do? Three minutes?
Thank you.
While Shamira Lawrence comes to the podium, can I have Cassandra Bowle, Latricia Woods, and Bridget Norris come down?
Hi, good evening. My name is Shamira Lawrence. I'm the Director of Mobility and Outreach for Inclusive Communities Project. We're located at 3301 Elm Street in Dallas, Texas, 75226. I'm here speaking in favor of the zoning change. There is no question that affordable housing is needed in Plano. That's not debatable. On a daily basis, I provide housing counseling to countless families who are seeking safe, affordable housing in a decent place to live. And they call me daily and many of them live in Plano now and they want to remain in Plano if they have to move. There's also people who want to move to Plano because they want, like I said, safe and decent affordable housing. They also want great schools. They want those job opportunities that you all have heard about earlier. And this development is close to those great schools. It's close to the job opportunities and recreational amenities. And so why shouldn't people who need affordable housing be able to access that? So addressing the need for affordable housing units in Plano and giving families like yours and mine the opportunity to be a part of all this great city has to offer is, in my opinion, the best use of this land. So I ask you to support this application and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for being here.
Cassandra Bowle?
Hello, I'm Cassandra Bowle, 4120 Sonora Drive, Plano 75074. I actually don't live very close to this particular development, but I have been involved in watching a lot of planning and zoning activities. I see the signs and I research them. I am very, very concerned about the floodplain. My numbers that I got from the second site plan show that we're getting a forty-one-point-eight percent reduction floodplain because there's some particular mitigation plans in place. I'm very curious about how that would happen when we are talking about taking out permeable land and putting in concrete, one hundred and sixty parking places. I did see that there's a lot of green space that's required within the actual parking lots, but that's still, only twenty-two percent of the original plot will be permeable. So I've been very involved with the Rowlett Creek wastewater treatment plant. That is a lot closer to my house. I don't think that there has been a storm water runoff analysis by North Texas Municipal Water District. Perhaps, perhaps not. I haven't checked the minutes for their last few meetings. The Rowlett Creek wastewater treatment plant will be affected. This extra runoff is going to go, I heard it today, tonight. It will go into Rowlett Creek and the wastewater treatment plant cannot take that extra. But in any event, I did want to bring to your attention, there was a Storm Water Pollution Basics article I found on Plano.gov today. It's dated April 2005. But I think it brings to light the site planning that's more favorable to lessening storm water drainage. The site plan for zoning case 2022-011 and the plans for many of the previously built multifamily developments really failed to be creative in planning and design so that something akin to this, and I know you can't see it, but it is in the packet that I sent earlier. A little bit more meandering, parking places, a lot more green space. I've never seen anything developed in Plano that actually adheres to something more like this. And I think there's some really wisdom in that particular document. And I think the city planning department needs to get some, look at that some.
Ma'am, you have thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Assembly Park and the apartments at Park Boulevard, Avenue K will be available soon. There may be some availability at the Opal Development. And get me, not, please don't get me wrong, I am absolutely want to note that I am not in opposition to affordable family housing. Why build such an important thing in something that is still floodplain? I think it should be rejected. There are places that would be very much more desirable for affordable housing, mixed use. We got a seventy-five percent affordable housing to.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next?
We have Latricia Woods.
And then?
Then we have Bridget Norris. So if we could have Donna Pryor and Andrew Lindquist come down.
Thank you.
There will be our final speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for having me here. My name is Latricia Woods. I'm a member of the Inclusive Communities Project Client Advisory Board located at 3301 Elm Street in Dallas, Texas, 750226. I am a resident of Plano and I have been for the last eighteen years. I am in favor of the zoning change because it would be a great use of land and well-resourced for low poverty-income people. Mr. Oli, is that how you put it, is your name? Oli, okay, sorry about that. You asked what was the definition of low income? And I really don't know how to feel right now because I heard some shouts out that reference Section A. So I want to speak from my heart to let you guys know that I came from Plano, I came from Dallas to Plano eighteen years ago with three little boys. It was literally like moving from a foreign land. I came from the inner cities of Dallas. We didn't have all this. So I will speak on the testament of what Plano did for me. You guys allowed me the opportunity by staying in development, development land that serviced individuals who did not quite have the full income. You allowed me the opportunity to go to college. I got my associate's degree. I moved and got my undergrad degree from UNT. And with that, I am now in graduate school, finishing up one semester for social work. This is because of the drive of moving out here. You guys showed me something that I didn't see growing up. That means more to me than an argument on wanting to see nature, wanting to keep view of a park. You guys afforded me the opportunity to live among you and to grow and to learn and to watch three boys, three black boys, walk across the high school stage. That's what you did for me.
You have thirty seconds.
So I support this application. I support the development.
The apartment complex?
I support this because I know what it did for me and what it can do for others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Bridget Morris. Norris, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Bridget Norris. I am a member of ICP, Inclusive.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Inclusive Communities Project Client Advisory Board. And I'm here in, speaking in favor of the zoning change.
Where do you live, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I skipped all of it, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm trying to hurry up. I, my address is 3301 Elm Street, Dallas, Texas, 75226. I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
I'm trying to finish up too fast and I'm here.
You've got time, you've got time.
In favors of speaking, I'm here speaking in favor of the zoning change because apartments would be a good fit for the location and this development would provide equal affordable housing opportunity to live in a great place in Plano. I was a Plano resident, but I'm no longer a Plano resident because I had to move after searching for affordable housing for six months. But if I could, I would still live in Plano because I'd miss it. There's great people here, the schools are great, there's many job opportunities and the living is really nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Next is Donna Pryor.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Donna Pryor and I'm a member of the Inclusive Communities Project Client Advisory Board located at 3301 Elm Street in Dallas, Texas. I am here speaking in favor of this zoning change because this development would be in a good location close to jobs, recreational opportunities, and grocery stores. I've heard a lot of people talking about traffic, flooding, and use of land, but what I didn't hear is the need for providing affordable housing for families with children. I used to live in this area. I am very familiar with the amenities of East Plano. Due to the convenience and accessibility of these amenities, I was able to utilize my opportunities to improve myself and my children's lives. Currently, I am nearing completion of a master's program. Evidenced by my accomplishments, moving to Plano from a low-income area that was ravished with poverty, opened educational doors and offered jobs that would not have been available had I not relocated to Plano. My children attended the schools nearby and graduated from East Plano. People living in this area have access to several grocery stores and lots of shopping selections. I do not want to fail to mention the great community activities and events that provide the space for family time and connecting. Because we lived in this area, my children and I were fortunate to experience the benefits of Plano's library and recreational facilities nearby, which was vital to their growth and learning development. Plano has so much to offer to families like mine who have struggled to overcome the barriers of oppression and discrimination that society has formed against us. I support this application. This development and apartment complex is a great location for someone to live and it will provide affordable housing opportunities for low-income families to thrive like my family did. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comments with you today.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Andrew Lindquist.
Sir, I see you. We'll get to you. It's good. Go ahead, Mr. Lindquist.
My name is Andrew Lindquist. I live at 3325 Timberbrook Drive in Plano. I'm less than a mile from this location. I drive by it every day. I love the idea of the low-income housing. I love their design. It's just not the right place due to the flooding issues. They're going to change it up. It's not just going to affect people to the south, it's also going to back up water into Timberbrook Estates. And they, they've narrowed it, they've added water to pile in, and they've done nothing to say, well, here's how we're going to keep it from causing issues elsewhere. Housing developments, if they do that, they put in catch ponds to try to reduce the effect. As others have already indicated, it's not just the traffic day in, day out at this intersection, it's the balloon festival that shuts down streets, it's the biking, it's the 5K and 10K runs. All that traffic is going to be blocked at various times from going south and all have to head north and that's already a nightmare. So I love the plan, it's just not a good location unless we come up with some other way to get people in and out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've had some new cards.
We have some new, new speakers. Jasmine Alexander?
Yeah, Alexander. I signed up online, it didn't show me for some reason. My name is Jasmine Alexander. I live at 6913 Jasper Drive in Timberbrook Estates. What I want to note here, the people that are in for this development live outside of Plano and they don't really understand why Plano is the city of excellence. I moved from Mesquite to South Garland to here, so I lived in Dallas County. Dallas County taxes you under the roof. So Plano is affordable. WFAA, the website, named Timberbrook Estates the top five most affordable neighborhood in Texas. Now, San Antonio, we all know what San Antonio looks like. When I moved here, I doubled my rent, but my taxes and my commute went down. Some people are hitting you with emotional tactics, but if you look at Dallas, when you go downtown and they want to bring up black people, all of them are under a bridge. So don't listen to them on that. I have two kids, it's the first neighborhood I moved to in Plano that didn't have any pedophiles around it. First neighborhood, I could say, y'all can go outside, it's a nineties neighborhood. When I go to the top of the hill of Los Rios, I see the sunset, I see the cowboy, I see the girls riding the horses, I see beauty. Now, Oak Point is bigger than New York Central Park. We don't want it to look like New York Central Park. They're building an alley on Jupiter and Chaparral, they got some more housing right there and housing around, it's going to cause even more traffic. On my way here, I was coming up Spring Creek to go to K Avenue, I saw a man walking, because it's a far distance, walking, his pants were falling down to his knees, I could see his thighs. It was heat exhaustion. That, if you look around here, you put affordable housing down here on the south end of 75074, crime has went up, mufflers are getting stolen and people are moving out. Now, I got an economics degree and I am a realtor, okay? When you, when you do this, you're going to have an economic hit. These people from the outside are doing an economic hit on Plano. And everybody sells off and the value of the houses go down, they plummet. Now, for the people that are moving into this area, right there on that block, right? You're paying three hundred to six hundred dollars a month. You're never going to want to leave that best spot right there. You're going to make sure you're going to do whatever you can not to show up on the income requirements. It's either you're going to have to sell drugs, move other people in, but you're not going to put it on there. So that is going to be a hole. Then you've got to think about the gate. The gate can break, cause traffic. Now, those people with the lower incomes, it's a far walk. We have, we've had extreme weather, extreme heat, extreme freezing coldness. Now, the city of Dallas, they burned down their city. We don't want to do that with Plano. We don't have that much land to build on and people are moving to Frisco, McKinney, and we could lose all our talent.
Sir, you have thirty seconds.
We could lose all our talent. So what I want you to know is that even though, yes, I'm for affordable housing and we have it, we have much lower tax rates, we have less in gas when you move here because you don't have to go far. I have three targets within five miles of each way. Dallas doesn't do that. They don't zone and they don't know why Plano is the city of excellence, so you shouldn't listen to them. And that's, that's from me.
Next, we have Paul Mann. And if a "La Preet" sign could come down and wait the next turn?
My name is Paul Mann. I live on 6612 Jupiter Road. I'm the most directly connected neighbor to this property. All the boundary line on the north side is my property. I have lived there since ninety-seven. I built my house in 2000 where I live now. All the studies that people have been showing here, the traffic will be this way and that way, there are studies. I lived it for the last twenty-some years. Traffic is bad on Los Rios and Jupiter intersection. We have to wait, especially I'm the odd example because I am in the middle of Timberbrook and Los Rios. I have to make a U-turn to get out of my house, I have to make a U-turn on Los Rios to get into my house. Like the homeowner association president mentioned, when they have a bike club race or some other event planned for three, four hours, I cannot get into my house. Even when I go to the barrier and tell the police officer on duty, sir, that's my house, I need to go in, sorry, find a different way. And there's no other different way for me to go but on Jupiter Road. But that's fine, I have lived with it and sooner or later, things will get better. But if this thing goes through, it will not get better. Traffic is bad, it will get worse. It will get worse. And another thing I want to throw out for consideration, on that site, I own seven and a half acre, but the same size this lot is to the north of it. This property has a common boundary with me. And I don't even have a creek running out of that lot. It's all developable. We, myself, Mr. Buchanan over in the neighborhood, Mr. Bennett, who owned 25 acres to the other side of this property. If we also come back after this zoning approves and apply for the same damn zoning, what will stop me? And I can tell you, this property is, right now, is a buffer between Timberbrook and this future development. When I develop my seven acres, all those buildings will be looking into Timberbrook residents' backyards. And if Mr. Bennett joins me, we develop all this. You'll have 30 acres of concrete and development of apartments that you cannot count on right across the park.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
So I am keeping the property. I have gotten offers on my land also. I'm not going for it. I will prefer a single-family zoning, which is already on this property. So if during my lifetime or after my time, some of my kids want to develop that, it should always say no more than single-family homes or we will ruin that neighborhood like everybody said. I will not do anything if a single-family stays.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
If a single-family goes away, I will apply for the same zoning. And it will be not 80 homes. It will be 180 homes.
That was scary, Dad. My name is LaPreet Singh. I'm at 6604 Jupiter Road. That yellow line at the top right there touches my fence, so I'm their actual direct neighbor. Most of the points that I was going to bring up today have already been talked about, so I won't retouch on those. But I guess more of a personal matter. When my wife and I decided to build our home there, it was done under the pretense that, you know, our next-door neighbors, we knew that someday there'd be some homes built there or something. We didn't look that, hey, this could change and there could be a bunch of apartment complexes or townhomes with that big of a density next to us. It scares us because it's completely on the opposite direction of what we really wanted. And again, that's a personal matter, so take that with a grain of salt. But something else I wanted to bring up, I grew up in Dallas, Texas, in Section 8 housing. I know how those development gets. I know they're saying that this is not Section 8 housing, but they're using those emotional tactics like that gentleman up there said. It's just not the right place. There's no other words for it. This is not the right place. I really wish that we could find another place on this street or in the area, but it's literally across the street from the nature preserve. It makes zero sense for us to build or them to build anything of that nature in that area. I'm sorry, but that's the fact. That's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that it?
That is it.
Excuse me. I did register to sign online and I did get an acknowledgement that you received my confirmation. My name is Ann Lott.
I did also.
I have registered opinions, but not to speak. But if you would like to speak...
I had the email saying that I...
Mine, please.
If you want to speak, you will be heard. If you want to speak, you will be heard. So ma'am, just make sure if you've got all of her information.
Okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ann Lott and I won't be long because a lot of what I was going to say has already been stated. But I do want to speak to one thing. I am the executive director for the Inclusive Communities Project located at 3301 Elm Street in Dallas, Texas. It's true. I don't live in Plano, but I am here to speak on behalf of the more than 400 families that we have that currently live in the city of Plano. And I will not try to appeal to your emotions. That's not what this is. But I do feel the need to tell you that the characterization of the people that we serve as criminals, drug dealers, and pet cows is a bit much. And if that's not appealing to emotion, I don't know what is. I just want to emphasize that while this plan may not fit squarely within your comprehensive plan, it does fit within your consolidated plan. And your consolidated plan states that you recognize that there is a need for more affordable housing. It states that you recognize that by putting this kind of affordable housing in high-opportunity areas, you are removing and ameliorating some of the barriers to affordable housing. And it's for that reason that I urge you to support it. Plano may have lots of affordable, or excuse me, multifamily housing. I don't doubt that there is, but there's not very much affordable housing. And this kind of housing is needed for all the reasons that were stated before and for all the reasons that this community lives here and loves this area now. There are lots of other families who would appreciate the same opportunities. Thank you so much for hearing my remarks.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
Dale B. Cannon. I live at 3009 Morton Vale. I live directly adjacent to the property. I have 6.3 acres there.
Do you have his information? Did he apply?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I bought the property in 1997, built a home there. It burned down in 2021. I had the choice of rebuilding or selling the land for, you know, a significant amount of money or rebuilding our single home. And I chose to do that with the understanding that I'm going to have single-family homes around me. I definitely would not have made that type of investment knowing that this would possibly make multifamily. So most people have made the same points. I just wanted to quickly say that. The other thing is, it'd be nice if, you know, East Plano's always got the stigma of being the wrong side of the tracks. I've been in Plano since 1982. I've lived in West Side, lived in East Side. You know, it'd be nice if the West Side had some of this. Thank you.
Thank you for rebuilding your house.
On agenda item 2A, we had a total of eight in support and 14 in opposition that registered their opinions.
Thank you. Do we have a different speaker on 2B?
No. The person that registered, sorry, let me find it here. Cassandra Bull, she registered, but she had already spoke on 2A.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like the applicant, you have five minutes if you'd like to wrap up and make any comments or... You're not forced to, but...
Yeah, sure. I think that, thanks everyone for their comments and commentary. I mean, we really do appreciate that and we have, we did make good faith efforts to engage with the surrounding homeowner associations, both with Curtis and with Becky, who we heard from both of them today. We understand the challenges when it comes to multifamily, regardless of whether we're talking about affordable or not, or market rate, which we also have experience in. So really, just back to the scale, I know some, I'll try to hit on some of the items that were touched on a multitude of times with regard to traffic. We do know that there's a capital improvements project that's planned to kick off just later this fall, is my understanding. Unfortunately, we don't control the traffic patterns in the city of Plano. It sounds like perhaps everybody on this commission can get with their capital projects, folks and engineers to work out and maybe signalizing that particular location. It sounds like everybody would be in support of that. As it pertains to flooding, I did want to talk about the conditional letter of map revision, which is what the city of Plano approved as well as FEMA. So these are very intense civil engineering studies. I have experience in my undergrad with water resource management and I can certainly appreciate the factual context of what everybody's talking about when it relates to impervious cover. The impervious cover on this low-density development is not dissimilar than the single-family housing because of the required streets. And trust me, you know, we followed the city's guide in terms of number of parking spaces per unit. The city of Plano's standard right now is two per unit. In other localities, it's one and a half. If we could be more creative with the site plan in the constraints, within the constraints of the city of Plano's engineering department, we certainly would. And we'd be happy to see less parking as well. We do not, I don't, while we want there to be adequate parking, we don't want excess parking. So we're certainly in agreement there. As it pertains to standards for property appearance and maintenance, and I know there was some supposition that criminals will be invading the neighborhood, I don't want to go too far down that path because it's just not factual. We are actually, based on the TDHCA financing and the way that these particular developments work, we actually can have more stringent background checks on our residents than any typical apartment down the street. So to hear that is discouraging, is the word I use. As it pertains to upkeep, there are compliance requirements, there are inspections, there are our own standards from a property manager and owner perspective. We take pride in our properties and do not let them deteriorate. So as it pertains to, I mean, that essentially were the points that I had, that I heard repeatedly. Manisha, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I think those were the highlights. You know, traffic, of course, is a concern that's been addressed by everybody, but that traffic issue exists today. And, you know, if this development is to go forward, we want to help support, you know, traffic changes. What can we do to help widen that lane, put a light signal, whatever it may be to help improve the traffic? But I think that's already, it's already in the process from my understanding of what's going to happen with Los Rios. So I don't see this development being, you know, creating a huge traffic impact to what there already is today. There just needs to be improvements to the traffic situation at this intersection. I did want to highlight a few of the projects we have completed, just to get an idea of quality and so forth. This is, of course, you know, I don't know if y'all have seen this rendering, but this gives you an idea of scale. We talked about with no breezeways, not your typical multifamily. Limit the two-story buildings as much as possible, as much as possible from the property line, so our neighbors don't get impacted. So the neighbor to the north or to the east, they don't see it, either because we're far enough away or because they have heavy landscaping in those areas. These are some, you know, just...
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
You got an idea of the quality of our projects? As Daniel mentioned, you know, we are long-term stakeholders. We're not here to build and sell. We are, the upkeep of these properties is paramount, not only for us, but for our residents and for the community. Our reputation is the most important thing and we're not going to, you know, have that go by the wayside on a development here. So we are here to support the community and build something that's great for the community to support and...
Sir, your five minutes are up.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Before you step away, is there any specific questions for the commissioner?
Yes, I have questions. And first of all, thank you so much for coming all the way up here and bringing us a great project for affordable housing. And Plano does need affordable housing, so we appreciate that. I have a question regarding your, actually, this rendering you're presenting right now is perfect. You're saying that your density is low density, is less than 12 units per acre. And I believe our attached family, sorry, single-family attached housing type density is also 12 units in an acre. So why didn't you apply for the single-family attached? Instead, you applied for multifamily?
That's a good question. I don't know if Angela wants to take that.
Lean on the attorney.
Good evening, Commissioner. That's a great question. If you're doing multifamily on a project, that means that the entire site is platted as one lot and you can have multifamilies living on that one large lot, as we saw here. If you're doing single-family, each individual lot, even if it's connected, is a separate piece of property. And so if this were to be developed as single-family, you would see each of the individual, if we could go back to the site plan, I'm not sure if I can get there quickly, but each of the separate houses, if you will, would have to be platted on a separate lot. And so it would be developed entirely differently from how the site is developed.
But that would be actually...
Go ahead. I was going to say, does it impact your ability to get the subsidies that you're looking
Well, I hear some rumors of subsidies, so perhaps it would do us a bit of good to discuss how tax credits work and where they're generated.
Well, excuse me. Let's just say the tax credits. If you were to develop this as something other than multifamily, would it somehow impact your ability to get the tax credit?
It would not if there was a different zoning designation.
Thank you.
That's correct.
That was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Orne?
Springboarding on Commissioner's comments. It's already zoned, single-family, okay? So if they're going to have single-family and have 12 units on there, they'll still have to have single individual lots to be plotted, plotted out. So I would think that it would be a small hurdle for you to overcome to go from single-family to single-family attached versus multifamily. Did you just not consider that or is it just because of the way the plats had to be
I don't know, honestly. You know, this was the recommendation from our engineer at the time and he's still our engineer. And so this seemed to be the appropriate zoning to apply for. So if there is single-family attached that this would qualify for, we may have to consider that. But I don't know. There may have been other reasons for it that this worked out the best, but honestly, I don't know.
Thank you. Commissioner Ollie or Bronson?
Yeah, so we have some incredible developments in Plano that are attached and detached single-family homes that have densities, I mean, if you look at Rice Field, for example, which is a beautiful community, single-family detached homes at 16 DUA as opposed to your 11, I would think that that would be much more conducive and much more favorable for affordable housing purposes. And so is that something that you would consider going to?
So more units on this property?
As a single, would you consider putting in single-family attached or detached units that would, in my view, come much closer to some of the things that we have heard today being discussed related to affordable housing and meeting some of those needs within our
No, I think in the same vein, if we can get the unit count or the, you know, the home count there with that different designation and still meet the parking requirements or other requirements that may go along with that, I don't see why we're not. I don't know which is, if one is more stringent than the other, just to be honest with you. But again, this was the recommendation of our engineer. But we would certainly, if there's another way to get there, to get to the 80 homes, we would certainly, certainly look at.
So one other question that I wanted to ask. You made the comment that we will do everything we can to improve the traffic. Are you offering to help us on Los Rios and the construction costs that it might take to make that from a D road to a C road?
I don't know that the D road to the C road, but I do know that there's some widening plan for Los Rios. And if there's some costs that need to be, that we need to help cover to help pay for that, absolutely. Would we cover all of it? No. But can we participate based on the demand or the impact that one may believe this is bringing to additional traffic? Of course.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm very much, I served on the comprehensive plan review committee. It was something very important to us to be able to address affordable housing. I think there is an excellent opportunity. I do not believe that the way that you have structured this today services the needs of our community, but I certainly think if you would consider looking at some of the other options, including providing single-family homes, attached or detached, on this property as it's already designed, it might save you some time and money and some effort. But as it stands today, I don't think it fully reaches the needs of our community. as it stands today, I don't think it fully reaches the needs of our community, but I would certainly consider some of the other options we've talked about.
Right, but, you know, I guess, you know, if the single-family zoning is more palatable, that's, that's one thing, but I don't know if that, I don't, I'm not seeing how that influences the decision to support the project or not. Maybe single-family zoning is, is easier to get approved, but it's still, if it's getting us to the same spot at the end of the day, I, I don't, I don't know, but that's, that's the question.
Commissioner Ollie, yes.
I'm going to assume that, and I think you mentioned it regarding the, the number of units, that that's a critical variable in terms of making this project viable from a return on investment. The question I have is, does that affect the amount of tax credit that you are able to receive for the project? Is there a threshold of units that has to meet that criteria?
Yes, you know, we, we are limited, limited to the amount of funds we can apply for, and, you know, we're in a time where, as noted, inflation has, has gone through the roof, costs are through the roof. You know, if we could do more units, we would, of course, try to do that. It doesn't make sense economically to do it, given we're pricing this today. So right now, this is the right, the right unit count based on current, current construction cost.
Yeah, one clarifying question, I believe you quoted some prices on whether one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom would go for, were those the prices for the 64 affordable or were those the prices for?
I've got them.
The other 16.
You're right, I did reference the market rate because there would be 20% or 16% of the units at market rate, which would be 1,500, 1,950, and 2,500 respectively. That's not top of the market, that is just a, that is a two-mile rent comp study from CoStar, have to provide that after the fact if you'd like. So then there's various, the rents are developed based on the area median income, which in this area is 97,400. That's where the comment to 35% of the residents within one mile earn under 75,000 hints would qualify for a reduced rent at this particular location. If we look at a, there would be a very, there'd be a range for a one-bedroom, that could be as low as about $550 a month, there would be only a handful of those, there, there would be 10% or eight units at 30% of AMI, and those would be spread across one, two, and three-bedroom units. And those rents would be about 550, 657, and $760.
Okay, thank you.
Respectively. As you go to 60% units, those same, same fit and finish as the market rate, as the 30% unit, as to the 60%, they are all exactly the same, would be 1,100, 1315, and 1,519.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, Commissioner Ollie kind of was heading where my question was heading, but, you know, you mentioned about the inflationary elements that we're, we're experiencing. I guess, I'm guessing you have that baked into your plan here, but it's very challenging to know that. How might those things affect your ability to really deliver? Because the discussion here, I think primarily, is around the affordable nature of these houses, and, and the other things seem to be superfluous to me. And so how might that really affect your ability to deliver on the affordable housing that you're promising here with the inflationary things that we're experiencing? I'm sure you baked that in, but I'm curious about. Yeah, that's, you know, those are, you bake in as much as you can, obviously, you know, and we're not looking to start construction tomorrow, that we're still, if we're to move forward, you're still 20, 12 to 24 months away from even starting. So those things are, we built in as much cushion as we can, right? But rents are restricted, and rents will be capped, and, and, and so that's not going to change what the resident's paying as far as are we able to build it within our budget? That is, that is, of course, always the objective, and if we get to a point where we can do it, then we won't do it, right? But once we start, once we break ground, we're going to hit that budget, and we're going to finish, and we're going to build to great quality like we've always done. Okay, thank you. So you just pause me to ask one more question here. So the fact that these rents are capped, what effect might that have on your ability to maintain this property going forward with capped rents in a, in a high inflationary time, especially with services, equipment, everything? What if? Those are, yeah, and those are, you know, again, we, we have projections for expenses, for capital expenses, for placement reserves. We are required by our lenders to, to set aside at least 75,000 a year just for reserves, just to cover, you know, costs that may be in addition to capex. Rents do increase over time, they increase every year based on whatever the, whatever the new rents are in that area, and so rents will continue to rise year after year like, like they always do, but they're going to be below market. That's, that's always the objective. But the rents in this project will increase based on what's happening with the rents in the surrounding area? That is correct. Every year they get reset, they get reset by, by. Okay, thank you very much.
Would you like to go first, or Commissioner?
Sorry, I, I did want to mention, we were asking about densities and different product types here. The multifamily one zoning district does have a provision that it, you could develop under the standards of the townhome zoning district, the SFA district in multifamily one. So if the applicant wanted to consider that, and we wanted to consider a stipulation restricting the proposal to the SFA standards, it's something they, they could consider. The density is a little bit lower in that proposal, though it's 10 units per acre maximum. That is something we could consider.
Commissioner Ollie.
Thank you. First of all, thank y'all for your interest in Plano. I mean, I, I think y'all have recognized that we have a need here for a product like you're proposing. I think you've heard and seen it in the comprehensive plan, heard from the neighbors, that this is something we all recognize there's a need for, and we've got proof in some of the testimony we've heard tonight that it's beneficial to our neighbors as well. My question for you is, how many other sites have y'all looked at or are you looking at to potentially bring this type of product to Plano? Or is this, have you just zeroed in on this one, or are y'all considering other locations in our community as well?
You know, you know, this, this, this program is a, I don't want to get into all the weeds of the program per se, but every year there's an application cycle. So every year you, you can identify sites and you can submit your application in January, February time period. The, the, I guess the rules, so to speak, as far as what projects would qualify for these, for this funding changes every year. So would we look at Plano in the future? Absolutely. But again, it needs to fit all the other checkboxes at the state level, and those checkboxes include high opportunity areas, which have been discussed, areas of high job employment, areas that don't have affordable housing. So as areas, let's say Plano has one or two or three affordable housing deals over a period of time, at that point, Plano, so to speak, is no longer competitive to receive more awards because in some ways there may be some oversaturation for affordability for a period of time. So that, so to answer your question, we'd, we'd always look at Plano, but it just depends as it checked the boxes at that period of time when we, when we identify sites. So we'll again start looking at some point. So when y'all chose this site, were y'all, did y'all consider other sites in Plano? We did, we did, and we submitted, we actually submitted another application off of north of George Bush and Ohio possibly, and over there by.
It was just south of the.
Hospital district.
Medical City, Plano, Plano Medical City, excuse me.
And so that one, we, we did not receive a, a support from the city at that time when we submitted the application, so we would. So you are looking at other sites in town and have considered other sites. That's right, so we always look, and then, you know, we kind of follow the process from there and see how long, see where it takes us. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
I have one, it's been mentioned a couple of times. When you say high opportunity, do you mean high opportunity for your ability to get support for it or earn the credits, or, and is that made up of factors such as proximity to mass transit, proximity to shopping, dining, et cetera? Because it, it does seem like this is a little isolated, so how are you able to present this as a high opportunity without those features being something that are, you know, within a half-mile walk?
Sure. So high opportunity are, are areas that have a higher, that's the census tract where the sites are located are, are high-income areas relative to the rest of, let's say, Plano. And so there are certain areas that are the high focus points where the state wants you to provide, which, which makes sense, right? Provide affordable housing in areas that are, that are.
Not known for affordable housing.
That's right. Otherwise, you know, you have these low-income census tracts where, you know, concentration of housing, and that leads to other, other situations. Now, we do have, you know, there are grocery stores nearby, I know there was concern about that, there's grocery stores within, within 10-minute drive of the, of the property, going either direction. There are, there is retail right, right there along 75, so it appears isolated, which is really, I think, the highlight of the site, of the property, but the fact is, everything is in very close proximity, and that's what makes it unique, because it, it checks all these other boxes of amenities nearby, and also you have, you have, you have the, you have the open space around you, which is awesome.
And, and if I could continue, that the, the high opportunity area is actually one of the primary thresholds in receiving a letter or a resolution of support from the city of Plano. So it's self-defined by the city of Plano by a census tract under 10% poverty level. I would also go so far as to say we consider it a high opportunity area as, as I mentioned, upward, upward economic mobility. What I, what I really view this as is young professionals, again, we don't feel, or I don't think in my mind that somebody making $60,000 a year is impoverished by any stretch of the imagination, but that's exactly what we're talking about here. It could be two working spouses, it could be a single mom, a single dad, whomever, however you slice it, that's making a good living and, and has to, to live here, frankly, and with the proximity to Collin County Community College, they have that educational capacity should they, should they desire to seek it, like some have spoken on here. So as well as the height, you know, the school districts are great, these are all things that go into a high opportunity area, which is why we're here today.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, I think we're done, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll have our discussion. So Commissioner Tong's like right on the button.
I still have a question regarding the zoning, so maybe this is for Eric. As if, as of now, with this zoning case, the zoning they are applying.
And closer to the mic, thank you.
The, the zoning they're applying for, if we approved, what's the, I guess, permitted or allowed the number of units they can build based on that type of zoning?
The applicant tonight, they have a, an application before you, and they have restrictions in that application, and I believe it's 11.7 units per acre is the limitation they're placing. They, they could, as I mentioned, go to a, a single-family attached type of product. I was looking at that more closely, there is a provision they could get up to 12 units per acre with some determinations from the commission, so they could go to a similar density as they're proposing tonight with a townhome product. So does that, that answer your question?
Yes, I think it's, the restriction is very important here, so even if we approved today, they would only be able to build 11.7, that's the restriction they.
That's correct.
They have on the land, okay, thank you.
If I could, just to piggyback on this real quick, but if we do something like that, it really doesn't change the nature of this project, does it? And we're still talking about the same number of units on this land, and I don't know whether you move from this to that, that it's fundamentally changed what we're really talking about here, unless maybe I'm missing something.
I think Mr. Bell may be able to speak better to the comprehensive plan impacts that that would have. We'd probably have to study it and get back to you on that, to, to a single-family attached product.
Yeah, I can just speak to the dashboard for the neighborhoods that has additional capacity for those uses, so it wouldn't be in a findings-type of situation for that zoning change.
So to be clear, even though the area is overbuilt for multifamily, under single-family, there's still opportunities?
The single-family as a use, yes, now you get into specifics of site design, there may be other issues.
Understood.
But, but from a, just from a use standpoint, yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm going to make a few comments. One is, thank you again for coming, presenting. I, I don't think you just kind of drew this out one day and said, hey, let's go do this. You, you put a lot of thought into it. I, I understand the desire for it to remain green space. I would love that. I think probably what should have happened a long time ago is the citizen should have gone to council and said, we want more bond money issued to buy this land so it connects to Oak Point Park, and we don't have any buildings here. That's not, that's not what's happened. As a matter of fact, I mean, the way it sits, what possibly could go right here? If, if somebody wanted to come build here, what, what would be allowed by right? Or there wouldn't even be a question.
Right now, it has the single-family zoning, the SF seven district, so the, it's limited as far as residential uses to single-family and those requirements. Other ancillary uses in single-family, we can look, look through those, but generally single-family uses.
The church.
Religious facility is an, is an opportunity. Again, we need to look at the site conditions, but it is limited by the floodplain, so it does have some, some impacts to the property, which would make it difficult for some larger institutional uses.
Correct, for larger uses, yes, but the point is, is that it can be developed, and as much as we'd like it to remain green space, chances are it's not unless, again, there's a change of heart and an appeal to the city to purchase the land, and that's, yeah, that's above my pay grade, put it that way. The floodplain issues, I get, but we've had proposals all the time in front of us where the builders are ameliorating those, those issues through retention walls, backfill, hardscapes, any number of ways, they can create enough space to build on. I do agree, though, that what's going to happen is we're going to have more runoff into the creek, and that exacerbates a problem we already have with some flooding issues in other locations, and has actually created a legal issue, at least one that I'm aware of within the city. The affordable housing piece is certainly something that needs to be addressed. We, I'm just not sure how we do it. I, I think that, I may be wrong, if we had come in with a single-family attached product that was affordable housing in this area, we might have had a different kind of feedback, not sure, right? I mean, some of them are not going to be happy with anything going there, others are more concerned about multifamily. So I, I think there might have been some opportunities there. I think it would require more dialogue with staff to figure out whether or not that would make sense. I don't know what your timelines are or anything else, or the process for, for restarting all of that. I do feel like, it, it feels isolated. It feels like it's something kind of dropped into a spot, but I'm not sure it, it feels right. I'm worried about transportation opportunities. I'm worried about the traffic, although I was going to make the point you already made that this is going to be expanded, they're going to widen the roads. They already know there's a traffic issue. City of Plano is a city of excellence, as someone said, and so they're on top of this, and this, eventually this traffic issue here will likely, likely be resolved in the near future. I also know that there will be additional development that goes on around this area. It's possible that, as part of envisioned, Oak Point, there are certain areas there that are designed for multifamily, that are, it's approved, it's, it's part of the plan. It wouldn't face the same hurdles, the same requirements for certain levels of findings, et cetera, that we're going to have to deal with right here. So at a high level, I, I appreciate the style of the product. I would love to see this come back, perhaps designed more in a single-family style. That might result in something different, and in particular, if it could be presented in a way that was collaborative with the engineering department to show how the eventual changes in the road designs were going to reduce the traffic burden in the area for everybody. I've been down there many times for the events, and you're absolutely right, I'm not sure how they're, how you're going to access this, people are going to be stuck, so there'd have to be a lot of work done in that area. So that's my, my, my thought process right here, is I, I think I'm going to have trouble supporting it just the way it sits, but I would love to see you take another bite at the apple with maybe a slightly different look at the, at the development and how you might do it with some help from staff. Commissioner Horn.
Mr. Chairman, in 2016, this particular area was zoned from agricultural to single-family. That was approved by this August body and also by city council. At that time, the plans were laid and probably under construction, Oak Point Park, which someone noted, and it was true, it's larger than New York City's Central Park. And the work that's gone on at Oak Point Park cannot be denied. There's natural grasslands, prairie lands, walking paths, zip lines, creeks to go out there and see the critters, plus it's also highly used for the Plano Balloon Festival, plus other runs and activities that occur around there. So I like to think that this body, when they. So I like to think that this body, when they zoned it single-family, they had that vision that when you moved into that area, you got to see this wonderful park. Since that time, we have a comprehensive plan. That plan, under Mr. Bell's and Mr. Bronski's leadership, plus with input from citizens, pretty much told us how, with our remaining land that we have left, what we should do for redevelopment. And because of that, what we see here, when we petition for multifamily, four elements within that comprehensive plan is not compliant. So we're somewhat cuffed. If we're going to go against a comprehensive plan that took 18 months to develop with input from the citizens, we have to come up with some solid reasonings to move forward. We have a special needs policy, okay? Special housing needs policy, which is, as you are correct, is part of the consolidated plan. That shows that it has to be in a high opportunity area, and this is certainly a high opportunity area, but there's challenges to that right now. First and foremost is transportation. As we said, Parker Station's pretty far away, GoLink does not go out there. It's gonna be a challenge to get from there to get to anywhere within the city without substantial amount of walking, or using Uber, or other type of ride-sharing. So I think we have some challenges ahead of us. And I like to, you know, as much as I like to see this property developed, and there are hurdles to that, and you all heard about the inflation, the cost of land, the cost to construct, what is affordable these days? Those are valid points that we have to address. So, right now, you know, for the petition to go multifamily, I have to agree with staff and deny the request of the applicant. With that being said, I don't think it would be that much of a hurdle to look at your approach and go to more of a single-family attached, as we, and work with the city, to see if that may be a medium approach to develop in this land and meet the needs of affordable housing. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Who was first?
I might have been.
Commissioner.
Yeah. I have to echo much of what Commissioner Horn said, and I would start by looking back at our comprehensive plan, which identified the need for affordable housing. And I think everybody on this commission, as well as the city planning department, we recognize that, and to that end, there's certainly some attraction to this particular site. But my opinion is, is that staff did a good job of really laying out the pros and cons of this. I think they did a very good job. And regretfully, I think there are more hurdles here that we're not clearing, and you know, transit is one of them. The flooding issue, while maybe that's not an issue for this particular property, as Chairman said, we think it could be downstream. And then, I think the very real thing, the fact that this was zoned for a single-family, and I have concern that the residents that live around there were able to build their houses with the knowledge ultimately of how this property is going to be developed. And I think for the city of excellence, we have to be mindful of that for all of our citizens, so that we have some confidence that when we're investing in real estate, that we can look down the road somewhat and know what's gonna happen. And so, you know, I think there's been some good suggestions here about some other ways to look at this, but I'm gonna have to support what the staff said, and for this particular project, it's gonna be hard for me to support that tonight. And I think you guys have done some nice work on it. It is, it does look like a good project in many regards, but I don't think it's right for this place at this time.
Commissioner Ollie.
I'm struggling. We obviously need affordable housing in Plano. I lived in an apartment for three years. Apartments do not bring crime, or do not bring undesirable elements to Plano. I like the word Commissioner Horn used, but I'm cuffed by what the comprehensive plan suggests for special housing needs policy, and I'm quoting, "proposed locations should be afforded the same health and safety considerations as other housing, and the isolation of this location, in my view, does not afford the same safety considerations from a transit and mobility perspective." When you take in the traffic and the business of the thoroughfare that would basically be adjacent to this housing development. You know, I know affordable housing is a trigger word, but you know, the income that would meet this requirement is, if I'm not mistaken, the average income of a Plano firefighter, police officer, or a teacher. So the, you know, that negative connotation that is being insinuated by pushback against... But again, that being said, we are restricted by the words of the special housing needs policy and the undeveloped land policy, and unfortunately, I probably would love to see it come back in some way, shape, or form. I don't know what that looks like, but as it sits, we are restricted.
Commissioner Ollie.
Just kinda pigging back in a little bit on Commissioner Ollie's points, somebody mentioned earlier the Rice Fields zone, which is actually higher density than this development, not too far from here, and I lived there for three years until just a couple of months ago, and I don't think I brought an undesirable element to downtown Plano. And so, there might be a subject of some debate apparently tonight.
Be careful, there might be a vote.
Yeah, I'm not taking a poll. But I think that the density is not the part that bothers me. I think it's if we were talking about a detached, single-family, even an attached, single-family zoning, I think we would be having a very different discussion tonight with a very similar project. And so, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here talking about a multifamily zoning in a single-family district, and I'm not comfortable doing that. I think that the neighbors that have been there for years and bought their property, and they have a certain amount of property rights that we need to respect, that they bought in a single-family area expecting single-family or something similar to be their neighbors. And the multifamily component, just even the zoning, doesn't fit for me. Like I said, if it was a single-family attached, or even single-family detached, I think we would have a very different discussion tonight with a very similar project, but that's not where we are tonight. So for me tonight, it's, I can't support it in its current form.
I wanna make a comment first, and I'll let Mr. Stone go. We're encouraging to go single-family, but they're also hearing from us that transit is the problem, or one of the problems, and going single-family doesn't resolve that issue, right? So our purpose for behind the single-family really is because it allows us more freedom and flexibility under the comprehensive plan, and fits more closely into our land use designations. So, let's just be clear on that. I would still have the transit concerns, not so much the traffic, because I know that's going to be dealt with, but the transit concerns. But, so, just to be clear to everyone, that that's not gonna go away, if that's your concern, if they come back with single-family. So if they come back with single-family, and we say, well, there's still a transit issue, I think we've done them a disservice, so let's just all be clear. Commissioner Stone.
A two-story garden apartment. How long has it been since we've had a developer in here with a two-story garden apartment instead of three, or four, or five? I would love to see this little project built somewhere else. It's not in the right place, guys. It's not in the right place. I'm sorry, a 10-minute drive to the grocery store or to a convenience store is just not close by. A three-mile walk to the transit station, as we've already talked about, is just not, it's not, it's not convenient. We've heard lots of discussion from the neighbors, and I've heard several of my commissioners here talk about expectations. The homeowners that bought their lot there years ago, and even the gentleman that's rebuilding his house today, they had expectations of what was going on around them. We can't sabotage that. We can't make this bigger change in their expectations. I just cannot support this.
I'd like to say one more comment, and I know that so many people coming from Dallas, and I wanna appreciate your coming down here and expressing your opinions, and all the ladies, I love the stories, and I, that's why we're here, for the city to provide this excellent life for everyone, and we support affordable housing. And for this particular project, even if for this land, they build one acre, two acre lots, and single-family housing, they can all be affordable housing. The type of community does not, I mean, affordable housing is not restricted to apartments. Affordable housing can be single-family residence. We have, I'm a broker myself, we have a lot of single-family residence houses that are designed or designated for affordable housing, so we support affordable housing. Unfortunately, I agree with the staff and the president and all of my colleagues on the board here on the commission, that this project is, presents a lot of traffic issues and transit issues, especially it's right by the park and event center. There are just tons of things going on over there, and if you, if you're familiar with Plano, the reason I brought up with the zoning density issue is because I have a feeling that you're not familiar with Plano, you're not familiar with the Plano zoning code, with how, you know, the density issue. So if you're familiar with Plano, you will know that's not a good spot for a, you know, a product like that. That road can be blocked for events, and the residents won't be able to get in or out. So that would be a problem for the residents themselves, doesn't matter if it's affordable housing or not. So those points, I support the staff's opinion.
Okay, Commissioner Carey.
Yes, based on all the comments, I would like to make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and at this point, deny or decline this particular project.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Carey with a second by Commissioner Bronski.
Oh, sorry, before we vote, I have a question. So if we support the staff's opinion, should we vote yes or no?
Yes, is what the answer is. So, all right, let's vote. Not an easy one. Okay, so by a vote of eight to zero, item 2A, is what we're on, is denied. We need a motion on 2B.
I make a motion that we decline, or we endorse the position of city staff and decline 2B. Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Bronski with a second by Commissioner Stone to deny And that item passes eight to zero as well. So, these are the hardest cases, guys, they really are, because we all know we need it. It's just finding the right spot and the right fit within the plan. As I mentioned, even ring back single-family, we're still gonna have transportation issues, but maybe between now and then, we figure out something out. Those that came from Dallas, your story, ma'am, I was looking for Kleenex, so, but it's true, it's real. I've seen it with others. I serve on, have served on city houses board and seen people with nothing, who because they had an opportunity to live someplace where they could have a roof and could go to school, make something amazing out of themselves. So we need more of that.
We do. Chairman Downs, don't be concerned. The families who live there, they drive, just like the other families in the communities. So, you know, 10 miles or five miles from the shopping center is actually a good thing.
Thank you all for coming.
Sure.
All right, it's 9:23, we're gonna take a five-minute recess before we move into the rest of the agenda.
[applause][1497.57]
Okay, now that the light part of the agenda is over, we will move on. I believe we are on item three.
Agenda item number three, public hearing replat. Elmwood Park 2, Block A, lots 1 through 4. Four urban residential lots on .8 acre located at the northeast corner of 15th Street and N Avenue. Zoned urban residential, tabled on August 1st, 2022. Applicant is TWCP Westheimer Willcrest Limited. Administrative consideration.
Good evening, Commissioners, Parker McDowell Planner at the Planning Department. Staff recommends approval for this item as submitted. If I'm happy to answer any questions, authority.
Thank you very much. Do we have any technical questions for staff on this issue? Everybody got quiet suddenly. Okay, thank you. Well, that'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this item?
The applicant is here to answer questions from the commission.
Very good. Do we have any questions for the applicant on this item? All right, any other speakers?
No, there are not.
Seeing none, closed public hearing, confined discussion, commission. Mr. Horn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve, agenda item number three, recommended as approval as submitted.
Second.
There's an echo. We have Commissioner Horn making a motion to approve item three as submitted with a second by, I'll give it to Commissioner Ratliff. Please vote. Item four, sorry. You were waiting on me. I'm trying to get to my spot in the agenda.
Agenda item four, that passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Oh, yes, it did, sorry.
That's okay. Agenda item number four, public hearing, preliminary replat. Elmwood Park, Block A, lots 1 through 11, Block B, lots 1 through 10, and Block C, lots 1 through 20, sorry, 1 through 5. 26 urban residential lots on 2.4 acres located at the northeast corner of 15th Street and M Avenue. Zone plan development, 53 urban residential. Tabled on August 1st, 2022. Applicant again is TWCP Westheimer Willcrest Limited. This is administrative consideration.
Parker McDowell Plan Department, again. And staff recommends this item for approval, subject to the additions and/or alterations to the engineering plans as required by the engineering department.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff on this item? All right, thank you very much. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. The applicant is here to answer questions, and we have Brittany Warden.
Hi, Brittany Warden, 1510 M Avenue, Sanos 75074. And thanks for having me. And Eric, thank you for helping me understand all the replat language that I don't know very well. But I have a couple of issues with the replat. First being that we don't feel our neighborhood was informed of the hearings that were going on regarding the changes that moved from the initial plans that we saw. So we'd actually like you to not approve this until we can actually confirm that we were all notified of that appropriately. I know that several of my neighbors were not, including us. Also, the lot number one, which is directly attached to our property, has a detached garage that's only five feet from our property line. And there's a giant 50-year tree that I purposely did not put a garage next to because I hired an arborist who said that tree would be either killed or it would fall over onto my neighbor's house. The other thing that I have a problem with is the exceptions they were given. There is zero green space. I wish that they would offer green space like Versa was doing with their property that they presented tonight. They're getting plan development exceptions. The city wanted five additional feet in case they wanted to do street widening, and now that's off the table also. As you know, that area, even though it's considered residential, is a very high-traffic area. Cars are always speeding down those roads. This is going to be a development with a lot of people living there, and there's going to be not enough parking. So there are going to be people parking on both sides of that street, as they already do. And not having the ability to widen those streets is a problem for me. In addition, I don't feel like you can offer these lot lines, especially for Lot 1, because there is a current dispute over a 12-foot patch of land on who that actually belongs to. And In-Town has actually told my neighbor, who's also here today, that they will be entering into litigation regarding those 12 feet. So I don't see how you guys can actually approve something that is not, it's unclear who the owner of that property is. So those are pretty much the things that I have. The green space is a big deal for me, my kids, our neighborhood. You know, the micro yards that they are providing the residents there on the zero lots is not really enough for us. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking. So we have somebody else. Did you submit a card, sir? Did you submit a card to speak? Come get a card. You can fill it out after you speak, sir. Thank you. Please give us your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Ergonis.
Step to the mic, yeah. Name and address.
Joe Ergonis is my name. I own the property next to Brittany. It's a little duplex, I'm the landlord. And I've had that property since 1990, maybe. And kind of a strange situation. The city backfilled.
Sir, for the record, could you give your address?
5001 Pinehurst Drive, Frisco, Texas.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem. And I don't know when it was, the city backfilled Brittany's home years ago. The city came in and cut some kind of deal with the church and replatted that lot. And they put a fence up, apparently unbeknownst to me, that's 12-foot to the east, no, to the west of my property line. It's been there for 30 years. I've always thought it was my fence. Well, when this whole thing started, David Forre from In-Town called me and said, hey, your fence is 12-foot on my property line. I said, what are you talking about? The city put that fence up. And I didn't put that fence up. I have no idea where my property line is. And he said, well, we're going to cut you a deal, we're not going to be too bad. I go, wait a second, we need to talk to the city attorney. There's got to be some case law as to what's going on with a fence that was put up by the city, and it's been there for 30 years. And they have an attorney call me. Basically, she's telling me I'm going to go to court. They offered me $1,500 to move that fence. And if I don't do it, I'm going to court with them. Well, right now, today, while this was going on, David Forre is texting me. He's the In-Town guy. Because I keep asking him, David, are you going to go in there and tear my fence down? He refuses to answer. Four emails and just escalating deflection, deflection. Finally, he answers, and I can read it for you verbatim, but basically it says, hey, I don't know if I'm going to tear your fence down, or tear the fence down. I don't think he called it my fence. Tear the fence down until I check with my attorney, because I don't know if you have the legal right, if I have the legal right to tear down that fence. I said, really? That's what I've been talking to him about for two months. And I'm asking him why this attorney is talking to me about going to court over this thing.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, I only ask that you delay your decision. Eric's been great working with us, but he's basically told us you guys are going to pass this thing tonight. And I ask that you just wait until the next meeting. Let us all get together with this guy, David Forre. Nobody wants to stop the progress. We just need to make sure that this thing goes a little bit smoothly. There's about five items.
Sir, you've exceeded your time.
Okay, thank you. We ask that you stop the process till next month.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Phyllis Sherrill with City Centric Planning, representing the applicant tonight. And I wanted to address some of the issues that have been raised by Ms. Warden and Mr. Ergonis. In terms of notice for this project, of course, there was a zoning case that we worked on last year. The formal public notice required for the city to give was provided. And I, Mr. Hill, had provided the list of the property owners that received notices. Ms. Warden's mother, I believe, owns the property, and she was on the notice list, as well as Mr. Ergonis. Now, in addition, we did have three neighborhood meetings and also some emails back and forth with the neighborhood group, where people could come in and we presented our different plans. Of course, this project evolved through several plans over time, but we did make those attempts to reach out to the neighborhood and hold meetings so that they were informed of the progress of this project. In terms of, there is a detached garage on Lot 1, which is next to Ms. Warden's property. And that was the only way we could provide a garage on that lot and still provide maneuvering room to get a car in and out of it. It would sit five feet away from the property lines. Five feet is the side and rear yard setback that's allowed in the urban residential zoning district that has been in place on this property for a number of years. But she also mentioned the tree. In-Town has committed to engage a certified arborist to take a look at the tree, to see if there are things that we can do as we start the construction process to mitigate any damage that might occur to the tree. Try to protect it as much as we can. So we have committed to that. In terms of street widening, of course, this is an area where the streets were built in the 19th century. They don't have the right-of-way that a residential street built today would. We have worked with the city, and there was some talk of us dedicating additional street easements. We were able to work through that with the city. In terms of not having streets, sidewalks that would be right on the edge of our front porches for the houses. So ultimately, it would be the city's decision as to what happens with the streets in this area, if they intend to widen them in the future. But any additional widening is going to impact everyone's property, just like it would this. But that is ultimately the city's decision. And in terms of green space, we did look at some common open space on the property as we initially started our design process. As we went through this evolution of design, that was eliminated from our plan. Of course, we did try to sell the property to the city for a park initially, but that was turned down by the city council. In terms of Mr. Ergonis and the fence, we've gone back and looked at the original plat from 1995, when the church created Ms. Warden's lot, as well as the parking lot, the actual lot. It does not show the jog in the fence that is out there today. So In-Town did purchase the 12 feet of property that's in contention. That was part of the sale from the First Baptist Church. We, In-Town, has made a proposal to Mr. Ergonis. He made a counteroffer, as you heard him discuss. And, you know, still certainly want to continue discussions with him, but it isn't an issue between private property owners as to that fence encroachment. And the, again, we've seen, you know, no evidence that the city, we don't know who put up the fence. It's unlikely the city installed it, because it would have been using public funds on private property. Back at the time, when Ms. Warden's lot was acquired by the city, her house was moved on to the property at that time, in the mid 1990s. But I don't think anyone can confirm that the city installed that fence. We don't know who put it up. Heard Mr. Ergonis say he doesn't know either, but it is there in that location, encroaching on To-In-Town Homes property. I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you might have. We do ask that you go ahead and approve the replat tonight, and we would like to get under construction with this project.
Thank you. Just so the commission is aware, there is a shot clock on this item. So whether we took action or not tonight, it would be approved under law. A point was made that this is actually, the legal side is between two private parties, and therefore really not something we should concern ourselves with. So with all of that said, Commissioner Ratliff.
Just one quick question. I presume you have title policy on this that will take care of any disputes between you and the adjacent property owner?
That's my understanding. There was a title policy on the land transaction. There was a title policy on the land transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
No other... Oh, yes?
Chair Downs, we have a resident that would like to speak, since her name was brought up during Ms. Sherrill's presentation.
Yeah, you're not the same person who spoke earlier, so... Okay. Very good.
My name is Linda Croson. I reside at 1568 Sparrow Lane, Richardson, Texas. I am the owner of 1510 M Avenue, which is the property that Ms. Warden, my daughter, and my grandchildren are living in. First, about the notice. If I was on the list, I have lived in that house for three years. I have no problem getting my mail. I'm not sure why I didn't get that notice, but I would like a copy of that letter, if I could get that. And I would like a list of who all it did go to, because I'm going to canvass the neighborhood because I've talked to several people that did not get those letters. So that's my first concern. My second concern is we are putting a lot of money into that house to renovate it so that our grandchildren will have a wonderful place to live in that part of town, which is where my daughter grew up. And we took a lot of time and consideration in figuring out where we would put our garage so that we would not damage that amazing tree. We brought an arborist in. He told us we had to push it back. We didn't want to. We lost a lot of physical yard space for the kids, but to save that beautiful tree, we chose to do it. We were also concerned that if we didn't, it was going to fall over on our neighbor's property. That's a big concern. There are several people living in that property as well. That tree should be a concern of everybody's. It's over 100 years old, and I can't even get my arms around it. So to put a garage next to it, five feet on the other side, that will kill it after we went through all of that painstaking process to save it, would be a real disgrace to the neighborhood. We've already talked about the streets, parking. I know that Rice Fields has been brought up several times tonight. It is a beautiful area. It's a great neighborhood. The parking is a huge problem there. There is just not enough space in the In Town designs to support the amount of cars that will ultimately live in that space, which means they will be parking on the street. Those streets are already narrow. I'm not sure how that's going to work when you've got so many people going back and forth in Old Downtown Plano, having a great time, and then trying to maneuver home between those two very narrow areas and then cars parked on either side. So I just wanted to say, if notices went out, I'm surprised that I didn't get it. I would like to see it, and I would like to table this discussion until we can get that letter and make sure that other people have seen it.
Ma'am, you have 30 seconds.
That's it. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? Very quick question. Can I ask another question? Actually, either or. Whose land is the tree on? Okay. Just clarifying.
Okay. To be clear, if we tabled this, it wouldn't matter. There is an automatic shot clock running that's going to, it would pass. It's an administrative item, not a legislative, so we don't really have the power to delay this indefinitely. Secondly, I have great confidence that our staff sent out notices, and they will provide you with a notice that went out. I have zero doubt that everyone that was supposed to have been noticed should have been noticed. I can't speak to the U.S. Postal Service, but anyway. All right. I am now going to close the public hearing, and we'll have our discussion.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding for us to deny this, there would have to be something fundamentally wrong with the survey and replat. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So seeing that, I don't see a signature on the survey, but I certainly see a name and a company. I can only assume that the survey is correct. So from looking at it with the staff's support, I think we have no choice but to approve this as presented by staff, subject to the additions or alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department.
That was a motion.
Yes, sir.
Before we vote, can I just ask Michelle a question? You want a second first?
Sure.
A second by Commissioner Ratliff. All right. Has everybody got their information they need? May or may not be happy, but you've got your information. All right. So we have a motion and a second. I'll repeat that. A motion by Commissioner Horn to approve Item 4, subject to alterations, additions, and engineering plans required by the Engineering Department, second by Commissioner Ratliff. Please vote. That item carries seven with one abstention. Seven, zero, and one. Mr. Stone abstained. All right. Let's move on to Item 5.
Agenda item number five, public hearing, replat, revised site plan, and preliminary site plan. Village at 121 addition, block 1, lots 1R and 14 through 18. Professional General Administrative Office, Restaurant and Retail on six lots on 24.9 acres located at the southwest corner of State Highway 121 and Preston Road. Zoned commercial employment and located within the State Highway 121 and Preston Road overlay districts. Applicants are 121 Village Limited, Village 121 Corner Development Limited, and G. Rubio Enterprises Incorporated. This is an administrative consideration.
These items are recommended for approval as submitted, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this? All right. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this item?
The applicant, Omar Rubio, is available to answer any questions from the Commission.
Are there any questions for the applicant on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Confined discussion. Commissioner Ollie?
I move we approve Agenda Item Number 5 as submitted.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Ollie with a second by Commissioner Bronski to approve Item 5. Please vote. That item carries eight to zero. Item 6.
Agenda item number six, public hearing, preliminary replat and revised site plan. Central Plano Industrial Park 1, Block 1, Lot 2R. Warehouse Distribution Center on one lot on 5.3 acres located at the northeast corner of Stewart Avenue and Summit Avenue. Zoned light industrial 1. Applicant is Stewart EPA LLC. Administrative consideration.
Good evening. Staff recommends the preliminary replat for approval, subject to the additions and or alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department. And the staff recommends the site plan for approval as submitted.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this item? All right. Thank you very much. I'll open the hearing. Are there any speakers on this?
And this is my mistake. Omar Rubio is in the applicant for this Agenda Item Number 6 and is available to answer questions. My apologies.
All right. Very good. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Confined discussions to the Commission.
I move... Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Agenda Item Number 6, recommend for approval, subject to additions and alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department. That would be the preliminary replat. And then I move we approve the revised site plan as submitted.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Horn with a second by Commissioner Bronski to approve Item 6, subject to staff recommendation. Please vote. That item carries eight to zero. We're on a roll.
Agenda item number seven, preliminary, I'm sorry, public hearing, preliminary replat. Plano Bank and Trust addition, block 1, Lot 1R. Assisted living facility on one lot on 2.4 acres located on the east side of Alma Drive, 203 feet north of 16th Street. Zone corridor commercial with specific use permit number 637 for assisted living facility. Applicant is Cedar Ridge Healthcare System LLC. Administrative consideration.
This item is recommended for approval, subject to additions and/or alterations from the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Horn, your mic is on, or is that... Okay. Thank you. I thought maybe you had something. All right. Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing.
The applicant is available online for any questions from the Commission.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
I move that we approve this, subject to additions and alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department.
Second.
You're a little slow tonight, Commissioner Tom. This decides like bang, and I'm on. These guys are in a hurry. All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bronski with a second by Commissioner Stone to approve Item Number 7. Please vote. You guys should be gentlemen. Ladies first. All right. That item was approved, eight to zero. Item 8.
Agenda item number 8, public hearing, preliminary replat. Riddy City addition, block A, Lot 1R. Hotel on one lot on 1.9 acres located on the east side of Premier Drive, 640 feet south of Rousseau Drive. Zoned corridor commercial. Applicant is Nitty Lodging Limited. Administrative consideration.
Staff recommends approval of the submitted item, subject to additions and/or alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have a quick one. Do you know where on this unusually shaped site the actual hotel is going to sit?
Yeah. It's going to be kind of where that Lot 1R, Block A on the graphic is shown. It's going to be the general location of it.
Okay. Up toward Premier?
Yeah.
And what's this leg shooting off to the back? Is that going to be...
That's going to be parking, and the dumpster's located back there.
Okay. Is there going to be a holding pond for runoff somewhere on this site also?
Not on this site, I don't believe. But this has been approved by, at least the preliminary replat has been approved by Engineering, and I believe they're going to be reviewing the civils when those come through.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Very good. You ready?
Commissioner, President, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 8, subject to additions and/or alterations to the engineering plans as required by the Engineering Department.
Nailed it.
Second. Go ahead.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Tom with a second by Commissioner Ratliff to approve Agenda Item 8. Please vote. Sorry, everybody, it's late. That item carries eight to zero. Almost there. Item 9.
Agenda Item 9, public hearing, revised preliminary replat. Willow Bend Polo Estates, Phase B, Block B, Lots 1R through 19, and Block X, Lots 1 through 4. 19 patio home lots and four common area lots on 3.1 acres located at the northwest corner of Turtle Creek Drive and Old Westbury Lane. Zone plan development, 423 patio home. Applicant is Shattuck Acquisitions LLC. This is administrative consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, I'm Rahabul Adi, Lead Planner with the Planning Department. The applicant is requesting to table this item to the September 6 Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommends the Commission to accept the tabling request. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff on this recommendation?
Just one. Any particular reason why for the tabling? Yes, my notes.
Currently, there are easements on the northern and southern portion of this property. The applicant wishes to add those as open space lots and have it governed by the HOA. And that will add four additional open space lots that currently there are as easements. And also, they are proposing a unique building layout, and they are trying to achieve that layout within the zoning realm and the setback that this zoning district is allowing them.
Commissioner Bronski.
My only question was, is this a shot clock issue in this one, in tabling it?
This item is on shot clock, but they could still go to the next meeting without their extension. However, at the next meeting, it would need to be approved, or the applicant could request their extension.
And it is an administrative item?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. I'll open the public hearing. I believe we have a speaker on the side.
We have three speakers.
Oh, three.
I will call all three down, and they can be ready to speak. First is Ravi Jain.
Yes.
And if Tim Razavili, I hope I did. Go ahead and have a seat. And Said Razee, go ahead and have a seat. Thank you.
If you'd please state your name and address, sir.
I am Ravi Jain, resident of 5948 Turtle Creek. This project we're talking about is back alley is smack in front of my beautiful Odeka Shea, but still, I am neutral about this project in the past, as well as now. I have a good relationship with the developer, and I like to maintain that relationship with him. We are concerned about how this change is being proposed by the Planning Commission, Planning Department of the City of Plano. Two, three weeks ago, I got this undated letter from this planning department. All it tells me, originally, there were 19 lots, and now they're going to be 23. That's it. And we come to the meeting on 15th of this month. In the back, it shows me nothing but the same plan that we had approved, the city had approved, or this commission had approved last year. On page 3 is the same plan on a little bit bigger map as it's shown there. In the back, all they asked me to approve or disapprove, or I'm neutral. No information what these changes are about. Only thing told is 19 plots are being changed into 23. That's it. And we've been asked to give our, you know, approval, disapproval, and all that. I feel like this is kind of very unprofessional. So we called the city and asked them for information. I called the person listed on here. He's not, he's absent on that day. I called again, left a message, never got the call back. We asked the receptionist to have the person call me back. Nothing happens. I speak to the person next hired to him. He promised me that he will have this person call me back in three, four days, or two, three days. Then I told him, "Well, we have problem with the flooding issues." He said, "Well, we need to have you talk to the Engineering Department." We will set up a phone call with the Engineering Department. Nothing happened. So I called, and he said, "Well, I've been told that..."
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I was told we will receive a letter. We will receive a letter telling what the changes are, which we have not received. We asked about the Engineering Department. Nobody can talk to me, but my other resident in the neighborhood got hold of the Engineering Department, but they were not forthcoming. So we do not know how to approve or disapprove this project. However, my neighbors have several concern about the flooding. So I brought them along to address the flooding issues if this thing, if these changes go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Said Razee. I'm a civil engineer, working for 43 years doing design for water.
What is your address, please? What is your address, please?
5928 Turtle Creek.
Thank you.
Anyhow, I've been designing for 43 years underground utilities such as water, wastewater, and storm sewer. And since we got this project going, the drainage issue came up during the HOA meeting, and also during the time that you all approved it a few months ago. So, nothing was done for the drainage, because all this runoff will come to Turtle Creek Drive, and will go to the Turtle Creek on the side of my house. Anyhow, anytime rains such as the other day, the street get flooded, the inlet cannot take it, and now with the building 19 houses, which would be all shingles and concrete, no place to for the water to, you know, observe this to the ground, all that will come and add to the extra drainage that we have already. So, we talked to the, we didn't know what's going on until the project started, and we saw the thousands of cubic yard of dirt, which is like a black gumbo, coming and spreading this property, which is three acres. And the elevation, they raised the elevation to such point that is now about two feet from the street at the beginning, until six feet taller on the other side. Is this the way, okay. Here, you've seen how tall would be the street grade compared to the field that they did. It's about almost six feet, it's above my head. And I know the way they did it, because they didn't want to consider putting storm drainage. All this runoff will go to the street side now, and again, will add to the, you know, extra water that we have already. So, on, here's another one. This is looking on Old Westbury Lane at Turtle Creek Drive.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Here's the other one you all see, is a corner of Westbury and Old Ship, old, what do you call it, Turtle Creek and Old Westbury Lane. And when you stand up, you see that on both side, the lot is elevated to a point that, you know, it would be like a hill. So, when they build these houses on top of this elevation, it would be real taller than the other houses surrounding it, and it would be like an eyesore to the neighborhood.
Sir, you've reached your three minutes.
And yeah, I'm going to just, so we talked, had set up a meeting at the site with the engineer, city engineer, and also the consultant. And the consultant said, I know your problem, I, you know, believe what's going on, I can't do nothing about it, because they told me what I had to do, and I did it. And Eric, the-
Please wrap up, sir. Please wrap up.
And, yes, city engineer says that we know the problem, and the issue is the drainage, and we want to do something about it, but it's not a capital improvement, and we don't know when we're going to put it in schedule. So, we just want to some thing from the city assurance, that if we got flooded, then we can tell them, hey, we told you about it, and you all can, you didn't do nothing about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
That's all, thank you.
Next speaker, please. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Tim Rosakani. I reside at 5937 Turtle Creek Drive. Obviously, a large concern is the water drainage. The main issue, as we've spoken about, surface drainage due to the change in drainage patterns. Based on the current land improvement that's been completed, the immediate issue raising the grades and dumping water onto private property reverts back to Texas law, which does not allow for lot-to-lot drainage. You cannot develop the property to drain onto another property without proper containment. The current homes to the south and southeast will be affected directly, considering they have failed to account for quantity volume storage, they have done nothing to improve the infrastructure of the existing neighborhood, which struggles to maintain with their current drainage. Aside from that, you're building 19 patio homes on three acres, when the existing neighborhood has 19 homes spread across 10 acres. Aside from the drainage concerns, an additional 19 homes at an average 4,500 square foot per home is suitable for four to five, suitable for a four to five-person household, which equates to an additional 75 to 80 persons, 75 to 80 residents. So, this issue raises the concern for parking, as the front side of these homes do not support additional parking for the proposed home count. We would just like for the city, we're not saying don't do the development, obviously, they've already broke ground, they've removed the tennis court that was already there, we would just like them for, for them to reevaluate this site plan and put something that belongs in this neighborhood, that actually, the previous developer's father, or the developer's father previously built on this neighborhood, he should do something similar to support the current homeowners. Yeah, so that's it. Just wanted to, like I said, the main thing was with the drainage as well as parking.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. I will close the public hearing, and confine discussions to the commission. I do want to ask a question, I mean, we're going to table this, but I recall this case, and I recall the drainage being something that was brought up all the way back at the zoning decision, and we had a lot of speakers that came in and spoke, and from the beginning, drainage was, was the challenge. I'm not saying we have to have an answer tonight, but I would like for staff to seriously look into what's going on with the drainage thing here, because I drove by it, and I 100% see what they're talking about. If there is no catch basin, or no way to capture the water that's calling on this three acres, it, it's going to inundate that street, and there is no way there's enough right there. So, I, I would love for staff to get with engineering, and when we come back on September 6, I'd like to have some report. I know this is administrative, I know we've got a shot clock, but obviously, they're not being heard, and I have concerns, so.
Yeah, we can definitely provide information. I do want to say that we have discussed this with the applicants, we've had multiple conversations with them. I think there's some, you know, comments about communication that I would say are not quite accurate. So, we have been communicating with them, the engineering department is well aware of the situation, they're reviewing it with the applicant's engineer, and we will make sure that it meets the city's requirements, but we can discuss with our engineering team and ask them to come to the next meeting for any other questions.
Please ask them to come, because I would really like to hear, as I said, when I went there, and I had no idea really, because you can't tell on these site plans when they're developed, that they're planning on raising the houses six feet above the surrounding neighborhood. If I had known that early on, I probably would have asked harder questions about it. So, anyway, there's lots of lights on all of a sudden here. We'll, we'll go with the ladies first.
I just have one, you mentioned that there's a shot clock already on this one, so when is the deadline that we have to?
It's beyond September 6, so we'd have to take some action at September 6, if we were going to take action. Commissioner Stone?
Yes. What exactly are we asked to approve?
Tonight, we're all being asked to approve is the tabling of this item to September 6.
But next week, then, what, what changes are happening to this document? Is it the designation of these four lots into common property?
That is correct. And also, there is a, there's a setback that is shown on the plat that, that may, that may change. We don't know yet. The applicant is working on the layout currently.
So, when we saw this project initially, there were 23 single-family lots to develop?
There were 19 single-family lots, and they had landscape easements. But now, it is going to be 19 single-family lots unchanged, plus four open space lots.
Okay, so, so the 19 lots that we are now looking at have shrunk a little bit, is that what we're saying?
No, they are making those easements as open space lots. So, essentially, it is the same layout, but instead of being an easement, it is going to be open space. In a sense, yes, it, four of those lots will be reduced in area. And I have an exhibit I can show.
They're not adding any housing or anything else, they're just taking land that was formerly an easement.
I'm more, I'm more concerned that there used to be 23 lots.
No, there was, it was always 19.
It was only 19.
There were 19 lots with four easements, and those easements, instead of being easements, are now going to be made into-
So, the 19 lots are the same size they were when we looked at them?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The lots may be a little bit smaller, because-
That's my concern.
If you see the image before you-
Yeah.
-these green areas, those were easements previously, and they were within the adjacent lots. So, the lots were a little bit bigger. Now, this proposal that's going to come back on the 6th is to reduce those four lots slightly, and make those green areas their own lots.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All I want to say is, I completely agree with what Chairman Downs has said, I, to having, to be looking at Turtle Creek and living there, and staring at houses that are all of a sudden four to six feet taller than my house, that is-
Crazy.
That is just waiting to have a flood happen, and so, I would very much like to hear some comments and feedback from our engineering department about how we're going to protect these residents, and in doing that, I am very happy to be able to move that we table this till the 6th of September.
Yeah, just a couple of things, because I got a call from some homeowners about this, and the first thing I want to do is make clear, there are still only going to be 19 homes here. The extra four lots, and there's some cute confusion around this, and Eric helped me with it, the extra four lots are the common area, so there's not, they're not adding to home counts here. But I have two questions. One, are they allowed by code to raise these lots if they are six feet, and I'm just, I'm going to assume that they might be, okay? How much can they raise those lots? Can they do that?
So, the engineering department does look at the grade of the area, as long as it meets the drainage requirements, the grading requirements that they have in place, then yes, they could modify the grade for those. There's, obviously, if they're going to raise them too much, it's going to affect the drainage, it's going to affect some other conditions.
Could they raise them 10 feet? I mean, what limits are there to what they can do?
I, I don't think they could raise them 10 feet. I, I'm, I'm not an engineer from this perspective, they do have to be somewhat in line with the adjacent properties as well, the adjacent streets, so there's height limitations really within our regulations as well. So, you know, engineering's looking at all this, again, this is not really related to the plat, it's really an engineering issue, and we do have engineering regulations that control that.
Which, which leads me to the next point. I mean, this is going to come back in, and our duties aren't going to change.
No.
And so, I guess one of the things that we should look at is, is how, how does the city address the citizens' concerns on this, if they're valid? Because I think our hands are largely going to be tied from an administrative point of view when we come back.
That's correct.
And so, I, I guess for all of us, peace of mind, if we can find out that some of these things we think are problems are being addressed, then, then that would be a good thing as we have to vote on this. But I don't know how much, I don't know how, how much ability we have to, to do anything once, once you guys approve it. So, anyway.
Right, agreed. The only thing I would probably ask is, like, we've, we've approved a lot of things, subject to engineering's alterations, what have you, perhaps for this, we need an actual report of some kind, just for comfort and our knowledge, to understand what exactly has been done to mitigate the concerns. Again, there's nothing we can do to stop it, but it at least shows good faith effort that we're addressing their concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Hill indicated they would try to have engineering here at their next meeting, so we could answer some questions. Commissioner Horn?
But again, on a plat approval, if there's something from an engineering or survey perspective that is not to code or infringes on other people's property, then I do believe at that particular point, we have the ability to disapprove the plat. Is that correct?
That's correct. If it does not meet the legal requirements, then you can disapprove it.
And I think that's where we're going to want our clarification next week, is that nothing that they're doing is violating our legal requirements, our ordinances, our code of ordinances. Okay. Commissioner Bronski made a motion to table. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Horn. Please vote. All right, that was approved, 8O, to table this item till September 6, where we'll get a lot more information. Item 10.
Non-public hearing items, the presiding officer will permit limited public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. Presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, it may include a total time limit.
Somebody forgot their glasses.
Agenda item number 10, discussion in action, site plan. Rush-up addition, block A, lot 2, utility distribution, transmission lines on one lot on 0.7 acre located at the northwest corner of K Avenue and Plano Parkway. Zoned light commercial and located within the 190 Tollway-Plano Parkway overlay district. Applicant is Atmos Energy Corporation. It's administrative consideration.
The purpose for the site plan is to show the proposed mechanical equipment, fence, landscaping, and other site improvements. This plan, or site plan, was previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 7, 2022. The case was then heard at the Board of Adjustment on March 8, 2022. The board gave feedback on the item and the variance requests, and it was withdrawn from consideration by the applicant before a vote was taken. The applicant has been coordinating with staff on options to address the issues discussed by the board. This has resulted in changes to the site plan that require a new plan to be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. The applicant is requesting the seven variances shown on the screen, and this is to develop their proposed equipment. The applicant has submitted the site plan so that it can be acted upon prior to the hearing of the variances. The commission lacks jurisdiction to approve or deny the requested variances. The approval of the site plan simply allows the applicant to move forward and submit the variance requests, which will then follow the normal board process with the Board of Adjustment. If the Board of Adjustment does not approve the requested variances, the applicant will need to modify the site plan to meet the requirements listed in the zoning ordinance. This item is recommended for approval, subject to the Board of Adjustment granting the variances listed on the screen and in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, just to be clear, I mean, we, we approved this in February. They went to the Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment said, eh, tweak this, tweak that, tweak this. And they said, great, we'll do that. Rather than get denied, they said, let's pull it, we'll run back through the process again. So, really, we're not looking at anything substantially different than what we saw in February, but there's enough changes so that they might get the variances they need to actually make this work according to their needs, which is very critical infrastructure for our community. So, did I state that properly?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. This is not a public hearing. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on it?
No, we do not.
Okay. That being said, I'm open to questions, comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve the site plan as shown, subject to the Board of Adjustments granting the seven variances.
Well said.
Second.
All right, so, great motion by Commissioner Horn, this time of the night, second by Commissioner Bronski. Please vote. Thank you guys for hanging around so late. I'm sure you were entertained. Okay, what do we have next?
Agenda item number 11, items for future agendas.
By the way, that carried eight to zero. Anything for future agenda? Okay. We are adjourned at 10:27. Thank you, everybody. Okay. We are adjourned at 10:27. Thank you, everybody.
I just hit him with my car. We need help.
Just remember, look out Texans. Bike, walk, and drive safely.